July 1st, regular planning commission meeting, please.
Okay, the recording secretary is not here tonight, and so Jenna and I will be doing our best to provide you with staff support as well as being recording secretary, so.
Okay, we'll be patient with you.
Thank you. Kowalski.
Here.
Phillips is absent. Healy.
Here.
Hardy.
Here.
Covert.
Present.
Hill.
Here.
Marsh is absent. Roberts.
Here.
And Hubbard currently absent.
Okay, you have a quorum, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda are the action on their meeting minutes from the regular meeting of June 3rd. Can we just move the minutes?
I'll move.
You move Roberts. Second, Cardy. Any discussion changes to the minutes? Seeing on, all in favor of the minutes as posted, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Minutes are approved. Next up, approval of the agenda for tonight. I think if, when we have somebody that moves the agenda, could you, we're adding an item, it would probably be under, well, it would be under public hearings, item C regarding the item that Michelle sent to us a little bit earlier today. It was noticed correctly through the public notice, but we just didn't get all the information. It is for the vacation rental, so 3141 Baker Road. So if somebody would like to move the agenda and add that item, that would be great.
I'll move the agenda as revised.
Okay, move Covert.
And I'm going to suggest too that I'll be abstaining from the first public hearing for Kentwood.
Okay, alright. Yeah, yes, okay. And I think technically you're supposed to state why, I think, for the record.
They are a client of my business.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Alright, so it was moved covert the agenda amended, adding item C underneath public hearings. Is there a support?
Support.
Alright, support Hill, on favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Alright, agenda is approved. Alright, moving forward, we have three public hearings scheduled for tonight. The first one is for Kentwood Place and preliminary PUD. This was, again, postponed from the May 6th meeting. So we have it here before us tonight. So I think at this time, I will, are we going to go to the applicant first?
Do the applications first, then consultants.
Alright, can we have the applicant, please? Whoever would represent you.
We've spoken about that for a while.
While you're back there. We have new technology up there at the podium.
Hearing that I don't see.
It's not working for you?
Do you have a presentation, Michelle? Would it be easier for you to?
Happened to the eye in the middle of a room.
That place was something that more functional.
Every time we have this, we'll technologically, which is, I think, we just went up with an overhead projector. The most thing that we go around is a ball, burns out. You know, I'll have a ball burned out, I gotta go cut a mean ball. It was an overhead sheet, so you put them on projector. And do you remember what was that paper called? Not just tracing paper, had different names to it, but like that tracing paper we would use on on stuff, I forgot what it was called. And then we just like to zip it on until it was so much easier. And it's technology. Yeah, the press, I remember that. I didn't really have to use it when I saw it. Michelle, I didn't have to use it. Getting there? Okay.
Sorry for the delay.
No, that's okay. Well, hopefully you'll be learning for the next time. Because I know this is all new technology.
You see presentation PDF?
Yeah, that's it.
And I have my share of technology.
Sias, next up is the text amendment to the zoning ordinance, so you're the exciting part of it.
Well, that's exciting. Alright.
Right. Hi, everyone. I'm Candace Brier with Midwestern Consulting. I'm here tonight with Pamela Burns Brown and Kent Brown, the owners of the property, as well as Brad Moore, the architect, and Jim Heisler, who's consulting on this project. So I'm here tonight to talk about Kentwood Place. Some of you, most of you, I think, have seen this project before. We were here in December for a conceptual PUD review. And then we also presented a conceptual PUD review to the city council back in February. And we presented this project and discussed these proposed improvements in the public parking lot with the DDA at their May 16th meeting. So they were generally supportive of the project. They did give us some feedback on what they would like to see with those parking lot improvements. So we've incorporated those into the plans that are before you tonight. So this evening, we're here to discuss the preliminary PUD site plan with the goal being recommendation to city council for approval.
It'll come back.
So as far as site context, the location, this is northwest of Baker Road and Forest intersection. There's assorted residential office, commercial, north and south of the site along Baker. The post office is just east of the site across Baker. There's an apartment building directly south of the site. The DDA's parking lot is immediately adjacent to the Northwest Property Line. Block away from Mill Creek, less than a block to Monument Park, so definitely part of the downtown fabric. As far as zoning and future land use, so the site is on Central Business District, everything around it is also zoned CBD. The future land use designates business downtown as well as all the adjacent properties. And the site is located within the DDA boundary. Looking at the downtown development strategic plan, it strongly recommends the addition of residential uses within downtown, and this area was envisioned as having two and a half to three-story townhouse. So this kind of fits in with that, that strategic plan as well. As far as the regular, so CBD is a form-based district, so everything's based on site types and street types. So the Baker Road parcel is a site type A on a corridor street type. The Forestry Parcel is a site type E on a downtown B street type. So there are actually no building forms permitted by right for the Baker Road parcel. Two family buildings are permitted with special approval. The townhouse and attached residential multifamily buildings are permitted by right on the Forest Parcel. So to build anything on the Baker Road Parcel would require special approval, which is kind of how we ended up moving forward with the PUD, seemed like the most reasonable and straightforward way to approach this project. So existing conditions, the site is comprised of two parcels, which together just over three quarters of an acre. The Baker Road Parcel is currently vacant, has been for some time. The Forest Parcel includes an existing single-family house and some outbuildings. That house is currently being used as a rental property. Each parcel has one existing driveway curb cut, so there's one on Baker, one on Forest. And all of the existing structures will be removed as part of the proposed development. So the preliminary layout, we're proposing 16 residential units in five buildings. So Building A, which is the building that fronts on Forest, would be multifamily building form. It would contain one townhouse unit, two stacked flats, and two micro units. Building B, which is the larger building that kind of abuts the public parking lot, would be a townhouse-style building with five units, just traditional townhouse-type units. And then the other three buildings, Building C, D, and E, would all be duplex buildings with two units each. There's a proposed sidewalk connection that runs throughout the site to promote pedestrian access downtown and to provide a connection between Baker Road and the public parking lot. Approximately 20% of the site provided as open space, and that includes a 360-square-foot pocket park that would have some combination of seating and game tables, planting beds and gardens, some public art, as well as a pedestrian plaza that could be used for community gathering, maybe for special events. I know the property owners currently work with the yoga studio that's just north of them, and they use that vacant parcel on Baker for some events and like outdoor yoga classes sometimes. So there's an opportunity to continue that in that kind of pedestrian plaza space. Vehicle access would be provided from the existing curb cuts onto Baker and Forest. So both of those existing driveways would be adjusted to accommodate two-way traffic. We are proposing 24 parking spaces on site. All of those would be within garages. There's no driveway spaces proposed. None of the driveways are quite long enough to accommodate a vehicle, so no driveway spaces. There are nine on-street parking spaces that are directly adjacent to the property front edge. There's seven on Forest, the north side, and two on the west side of Baker, so as well as the adjacent public parking lot, so. It's understood, I guess, that guests and even some residents, depending on how many vehicles they own, could potentially use that public parking to park their vehicles. There are eight proposed bicycle spaces with additional options for bike parking within every unit's garage. And then we're proposing a solid waste enclosure on site for trash and recycling carts or dumpsters, kind of at the north end there. And you can see, so on the drawing on your screen, it's showing vehicle maneuvering in and out of that garage, the northmost end. But further, if you have a full set of plans, there's also truck turning events for fire trucks as well as a garbage truck. So you can see that the truck could pull in and back out to that little sub road and then pull back out onto Forest. This being the PUD, public benefits and compliance, the PUD requirements. So this project is a mixed-use development. It's providing residential and non-residential uses. We're proposing live-work units in the building that fronts on Baker Road, which is building E. So instead of just a straight commercial use of that building, we're hoping for some live-work units to provide that ground for non-residential use on the Baker front edge. We're also proposing a variety of housing options, so there's traditional multi-story townhouses as well as smaller, single-story units. It does meet the requirements for pedestrian and transit-oriented design. The buildings are located at the right supply. They're oriented toward the street. We're proposing a new sidewalk through the site to provide pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. We're also proposing a new bench adjacent to the sidewalk on Baker to enhance the pedestrian experience along Baker. And new bike hoops on both the Baker and Forest frontages adjacent to the public sidewalk. We believe that this meets the high-quality architectural design. The buildings will include high-quality materials and interesting design elements. We've worked to take design inspiration from nearby structures and unite the proposed development to the broader neighborhood character. This has efficient consolidation of poorly dimensioned parcels. Separately, these parcels are generally too small for any kind of functional redevelopment. And as I mentioned, there's no building forms that are permitted by right on Baker Parcel under the current zoning ordinance, so the consolidation of the parcels allows for greater development opportunity and a more cohesive project. We believe that the proposed townhouse units and attached residential style provides an effective transition between the existing core of downtown, the businesses, the offices, and some of the adjacent multifamily to the more single-family residential uses as you move away from the downtown core. And the PUD also provides housing options that aren't generally available throughout the city. And then lastly, there is a shared emergency access from Baker to Forest that's realized design that wouldn't necessarily be with these two parcels, we develop separately. As far as the utilities go, we are proposing a new eight-inch looped water main to connect to the eight-inch main on Baker and the 12-inch main in Forest, so that would loop through the site. There's one new water service lead provided to each unit for the duplex buildings, so Buildings C, D, and E. Buildings A and B, which are the two on the Forest piece, those would both have meter rooms. So they'd be allowed to have one service lead to service the entire building. There's also a new hydrant being proposed near the center of the site. It's kind of hard to see on that drawing, but it's right near the front corner of Building B, the long building. There's new sanitary leads being proposed for each building. The sanitary would connect to the 15-inch main in Baker and the eight-inch main in Forest. We did do infiltration testing in October of last year. The site had very good infiltration rates. So we're proposing underground infiltration beneath the driveway in front of Building B. And then there's a number of see overflow that outlets, like 20-inch storm sewer in Forest. And then Brad, if you want to come up and talk about the buildings for a moment?
So, sorry, could you introduce yourself?
Right at the door. It's distributed to you. Our comments we received, please, the chair, didn't indicate the architecture was well received, so we haven't proposed any significant changes to the form, except for some dimensional changes in some of the windows that fought on the streets on lower level. Buildings all resemble townhouses, a style of architectural form, even though, for example, in Building A, we found a bit of a compromise in micro units on the ground levels, the lowest level, two of the units, which would stack one residential unit. So that is not technically a townhouse because you have communal living. The general organization, again, is unchanged with the lowest level being the level where you can park your cars. There'd be some opportunity for, again, basement level with a garage parking as well as the corridors. On the main level, main living level, you'd have your communal living spaces, your living room, dining room, kitchen, and a half-bath on that level. The next level up would be the sleeping level, so you'd have a couple of pheasants and pigeons. And then each unit would come with an option for a habitable attic or not entirely attic. You could finish off in the gable form, if that was your design. And that is, the organization is all of the dwelling units irrespective of common building, how many units are in the building. So whether it's three, it's two, it's four, it's, it's in organization for each unit. So there are left-hand versions, right-hand versions of each unit. Also, your garage might be on the left-hand side or the right-hand side, depending upon where you fall in the building. They're all essentially very similar. Any questions?
Not right now, but we may have additional questions as we go through. Thank you. Okay, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just have a couple more. So we did get review comments from OHM, the fire department, Carla Wortman, and then Michelle provided some staff review comments. We've met with city staff and consultants several times as we've been developing these plans, just to discuss the project and get clarification on correct ways to apply code, things like that. We're committed to working with staff and consultants to resolve any outstanding issues, questions. I know a lot of the comments and items that were suggested as conditions in the review letters were all things that we can address and don't take any issue with, so. All good there. And then lastly, we did look at kind of an alternative layout option or parallel plan for this property. So because it's in the Central Business District, it allows for 100% lot coverage, no setbacks, no vehicle parking is required. You can have a 38-foot tall building. So there's opportunity here, particularly on the Forest Parcel, to build a massive structure that is property line to property line. All multi-family units, no parking. We don't think that's what would best fit with downtown. That's obviously not what we're proposing, but just to kind of give a sense of how what we are proposing compares to what code would allow. We did take a look at that. Again, tonight, we're asking for your feedback as well as hopefully a recommendation to the city council for approval. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to our staff, and then we'll probably have you back up for some questions. Thank you. Shell? Who?
Megan. Megan, then Marcus.
Megan Marcus Fire.
And I'll summarize the DAFD and do staff report.
Perfect.
Good evening, Megan Massiminoff with Carla Wortman Associates. We're the city's planning consultants. Just in terms of process, this is a preliminary PUD review. We have a public hearing here at the planning commission level. You make a recommendation to city council, and then if city council approves it, then it will go on to final PUD review. And it would come here, and then you would make a recommendation to the council. Wanted to highlight the number of changes that have happened since you saw this, that conceptual. Number one, there's a pocket park proposed at the western edge of the site facing the adjacent parking lot. And they have added, as was cited by the applicant's engineer, a combination of seating, game tables, planting beds, these gardens. So it's not just a space that's indicated. They've actually given you some indication of how it would be built out and possibly used. The proposed sidewalk connecting the development to the existing sidewalk is owned by the DDA. They've spoken to the DDA. I would urge you to look at that as maybe a unique opportunity to have a building facing a parking lot and activating that site rather than facing interior, which that wasn't known the last time. It was before you. Bicycle parking's been added with a total of eight spaces. Parking spaces decreased from 36 spaces to 24. Micro units are proposed in Building A. One thing that was made clear to us by the applicant is that parking spaces are not associated with those two units. So that's something that you haven't seen before, and that's different. The number of units increased from 15 to 16 units. It was our understanding when we wrote this that Building E would no longer be a live-work unit. The applicant indicated that it would. Either way, you can look at it, especially with a PUD. Because one of the reasons that they are here is on, with this particular site type and street type, there's no residential allowed on the first floor facing Baker. And that was one of the reasons that they were brought here. Also, I want to clarify something the applicant said before. There is a principally allowed building type that's an existing house. So if you go down Baker, you'll see on either side of these, these are existing houses that are permitted building form for adaptive reuse, like the yoga studio next door. In terms of the, as the applicant, in terms of the master plan and the zoning, it's zoned and planned for Central Business District or downtown. Want to emphasize that in future land use category, ground floor, multiple family uses are listed as an appropriate special land use. The master plan also notes that the density of residential uses should be determined by bulk and height requirements. The reason I highlight that is that one of the things in the PUD you look at is a density bonus. There's some analysis of ours later on. The applicants indicated that they went through that, and we agree with them that a very larger apartment building could be placed on Forest. Also, a mixed-use building with residential units on the second and third floor could be placed on Baker. So while the 16 units, when you look at it, may seem like a lot on this, really in the allowed building forms, they could build that number of units. In terms of building location and site design, there are a couple of things that we wanted to look at. First of all, in the CBD zoning district, this site is subject to the design standards for the district. That requires a sidewalk to be between 10 and 20 feet width with a dedicated walkway of at least five feet and a planting or furniture zone at least three feet located between the walkway and back of it. It seems like what is in front of you meets that, but we didn't have exact dimensions. So we just wanted to point that out, and that the applicant should bring that appropriate information. Also, one of your standards is that there be an innovative design. We feel like that there is an innovative design in terms of joining these two parcels, and also the connections that go through it. You should look at how critically, how the proposed design, particularly in terms of pedestrian connections, connects the downtown beyond the needs for the development itself. Because again, with the PUD, you're looking for a recognizable benefit. Also, looking at its relationship to adjacent land uses as a standard. Feel like the proposed architecture, internal driveway, and connected sidewalks create a shared space. And the intent is to bring consumers into the surrounding commercial areas while housing units that are consistent with the downtown's historic character. In a report, there are a number of deviations that would be needed in terms of, which is on page 99 of your packet. 99 and 100. In terms of minimum side yard setbacks and a minimum front yard setback on Forest, minimum ground for floor heights for the duplex or the live-work units. Things we wanted to highlight on that is that on Baker, the proposed setback for the duplex unit E for the front yard setback that's in line with the porch of the existing house to the north. So they lined that building up next to, so it's in line with the character of what's beside it. In terms of that frontage buildout, if they add a little more depth, play into the architectural drawings, which would be, probably would become more finalized as we go through phases. They would likely meet that standard. Also, then for the minimum side yard setbacks, particularly for Building C on Baker Road, those are smaller than the side yards of the surrounding parcels. So I want you to look at those and think about the character of the area and whether those are appropriate. Keeping in mind that the downtown is looking for it to be dense and does allow for zero side back, side yard setbacks for multi-use, a multi-use building. build, a mixed-use building. In terms of that ground floor height, the minimum ground floor height, those are really intended to make sure that buildings can be adaptively reused throughout their lifetime. But if you look at these, it's really not the intent of those. All of these are intended to be to, to be residential in character. I would think the only one where that would really come into play is the live-work unit. But we feel like all of those deviations could be appropriate. Skipping onto parking, as was indicated by the applicant, no parking is required in the central business district. They are proposing twenty-four spaces. Therefore, Mr. Required, they're violating the maximum, so that would be a need to be a waiver on, on that part. They have minimum, they've met the minimum requirements for bicycle parking. In terms of landscaping plan, one of the site design elements for P U D is extensive landscaping beyond site plan requirements. As you can see, when you've gone through it, they comply or exceed with the, in the table with the requirements. I want to apologize, on page eighteen of our letter, page one hundred and forty, one hundred and four of your packet, those last two paragraphs are not applicable. We had some back and forth with staff about whether there was a residential use associated with the property next door, which has been referred to as a yoga house at this point in time. It's not a residential use, so there's no, there's no required screening between uses on those things. So if you could please ignore those last few paragraphs and the two at the bottom of page one hundred and four. In terms of exterior elevations and floor plans, again, design requirements for the four base districts and for the C B D apply. In terms of those corners lines and expressions are asked to delineate the top of the facades. And those are usually for flat roof, not for peak roof and not for this type of style. Also, front facade, window lintels and sills are required except for ground floor display windows. And that there not be flush with the facade. Again, we feel like this would be appropriate, but deviation, a waiver would be needed. And those can be given. So for the P U D qualifications, really, we felt like all of these could be reached. Specifically with a variety of housing items, pedestrian oriented design will note that the design regulations require those pedestrian designs, so that might be one where you might feel like if they weren't a P U D, they would have to meet those anyway. It is the efficient consolidation of poorly designed, poorly dimensioned parcels or property with difficult site conditions. And then also having shared vehicular access between prop, between the properties. Again, with that, we would let, we would ask you to look at it versus internally and what's the benefit to the community or to pedestrians or surrounding areas in terms of making connections. And all of those numerous numerous standards on pages one oh six to one oh eight, we feel could be met. Just wanted to talk about item L on page one hundred and eight. In terms of whether the plan could be seen as a substantial circumvent the strict application of zoning standards. In our review, we pointed out that the zoning ordinance is inconsistent in its treatment of townhouse and duplex buildings for the site A-type properties on the quarter of student's C B D. In that those building forms are allowed, but a first floor residential use is not. So that created a situation that it, that brought this P U D forward. Also, the conceptual review, we talked about whether amending ordinance to solve that problem would be an option as well. Wanted to just remind you of that conversation we had, and then the applicant was encouraged to go this direction. I'd mentioned about project density. One of your things, one of your findings tonight would be to confirm that appropriate density for city council consideration. In terms of open space regulations, the project meets those in the following manner. There's open space areas are conveniently located in relation to the dwelling units. Streets are preserved and protected, and again, there's the pocket park. In terms of P U D design to standards, this is classified as a mixed-use project, then it needs two enhancements of community and public spaces, and so that would be the pocket park and then the bench seating area that's proposed on Baker. Finally, in terms of the P U D standards, again, we feel that these could be met. A number of them, we deferred to the city engineer and the fire department. We feel like it's consistent with the master plan and the spirit of the P V R article. And again, in the downtown future land use category, upper story, middle east, multi-family uses and live-work units are listed as appropriate. One of the things to look at is whether this would change the essential character of the surrounding area, the architecture to excuse from it. But again, we talked about the side yards and how it would, if it feel, we feel like it would help fill gaps in the pedestrian in the non-motorized system. And meet all those other P U D standards. In terms of our recommendations, we had a number of things that were listed that we felt the applicant should bring forward. And then also, we had a listing of deviations and also determinations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Probably have some questions a little bit later. Marcus, please.
Evening, Marcus McNair with O H M. I'll keep it relatively brief. As the applicant mentioned, they've been working with our office and D P W on the utility design. They are proposing a water main, which is necessary. Their site require coverage and the service to the buildings. It does provide some redundancy to the city system as well, having that in Baker Forest with public main. So we do that as a positive. Noted in our letter, you probably noticed there's some more going on in Baker Road. We have been coordinating with the applicant to incorporate as much of their work as feasible with that job. Exactly how that'll pan out remains to be seen. Project primarily a project and contract, it's a state contract and contract, contractor a certain deadlines, but they have a cooperative and are working with us to the extent that they can. I think we'd mentioned earlier, the under the storm retention is proposed as underground. It's a pretty tight site. There's, you know, a room for a patent on the property, so they have acknowledged the need to go underground with their water detention and pre-treatment. And this, I guess that's a little points to the race relates to circulation. But a little bit of concern that the turnaround area by the dumpster might be used as a parking space. Looks like you could squeeze a small car in there. It's set up to be a turnaround for that drive. That could probably be handled with striping or signage. But we felt like that wasn't addressed in some fashion that could really impact access that, that last garage space. And then noted in our letter, the, the, the circulation works from an engineering perspective. They are proposing a hardscape connector. So normally there wouldn't be through traffic circulating the site between Baker and Forest, but they do need to accommodate emergency vehicles, so we refer to the fire department on the adequacy with and whatever provisions need to be in the plan to make sure that tables or some other obstruction don't end up in that space and impact that sort of way.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle.
Okay, Chief Armstrong, are you going to present the D A F D report or is Ed? Whoever it is, go ahead and unmute yourself. Please.
I, I think Ed's on the call, but I, I'll start and he can weigh in as he's done the majority of the review on the project. I think many of these comments have been seen before and as O H M identified, access is really one of the biggest concerns with regards to making sure we have adequate circulation around the entire site, both from a, a drive width as well as a clear span width in order to set up an aerial device if, if and when needed. There is some opportunity to, to deviate from these, these widths in the event the buildings are, are sprinkled and happy to talk about that if that is needed. We recognize there's underground detention and just want to confirm that the weight capacity is, is sufficient for the heaviest of our, our trucks that may be driving on there. And as O H M just referred to, the drive-through space or the, the connector space that is intended to be drive-through for emergency vehicles can become an attractive spot for tables, chairs, other benches, other things like that. We just need to make sure that's always kept clear. There'll be some need for some fire lane signs and no parking signs as, as was referred to by O H M. We also need height elevations for the buildings to understand, you know, what access we will have and, and what will be needed and make sure that we can appropriately get to all points of, of the roof areas. Fire alarms that will need to be monitored and certainly need to make sure the garage spaces have appropriate ceiling and wall fire ratings, since there will be occupied space above those.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Okay, so I think, let's see, moving, I believe we covered all our staff, correct? Missed anybody, Michelle? Okay. Why don't, you, you can go now.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so I think Megan and Candace, the applicant representative, gave you a good overview of what's being proposed. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Megan also went through the planning process, the master plan and all of the different, excuse me, criteria for for qualifying as a P U D and then the different standards. And what you'll see primarily through my letter is a summary of, of everything that the consultants found and staff found and where we think they may need or by doing a plan revision or providing additional information could need. But if planning commission does not agree with that or determines the things like proposed building forms and land uses don't meet the intent, please provide clear input to the applicant to know how they could meet them. Excuse me. I think Megan hit the nail on the head with the pedestrian linkage from the parking lot through the site to Baker Road. Has it been demonstrated that what they're providing is more than just what's needed for the residents of that community? Is there a need for that outside of that? Those are the type of questions you'll be asking yourself as you're looking through this for the innovative design and, and unifying elements. Excuse me. The D D A did review the plans with the plant, with the with the applicant in May, and the applicant provided a revised plan for them to look at in June. The, the D D A was generally receptive with what they were proposing. They don't get into the weeds on the same way you need to, but they were relatively receptive to it. They did ask that instead of the five-foot sidewalk, the applicants make it seven-foot sidewalk, which they did do. If this goes forward, they will need to have maintenance and maintenance agreement with the D D A. I think one of the things that was that staff went into the most detail about was the and this is something that chief has already touched on, and I'll digress with that in a moment. They're proposing a twenty-six foot wide aisle, drive aisle in order to meet the aerial apparatus requirement, that being twenty-sixteen. The, the concern is it's a, it, when you look at it, it's really broken down into twenty-foot, twenty-one foot wide drive aisle with a five-foot wide sidewalk. It's curbless, so there isn't, there's no separation, if you will, kind of like the wooner, or sometimes they call them the vent streets. But usually with those, you have not a continual barrier between traffic and pedestrians, but you have some intermittent, maybe through decorative bars, planters. In this case, we don't have that, so you have a twenty-six foot wide drive aisle, even though part of it's called a sidewalk. And it's right, it's right up to the property line. That presents an issue from the engineering standards, from the view, you can't have a drive aisle right on the property. So in talking with the chief, if they were to sprinkle the buildings, he can allow for the, the width to be reduced potentially to eighteen feet. That would leave a three-foot buffer between the drive aisle and a five-foot sidewalk. That way you met your criteria for the safety and welfare, et cetera. Ultimately, planning mission needs to think about that in turn, what they're proposing meets that criteria or if you, if it needs to be looked at in a way staff has presented, or if you have another for suggesting that that criteria be met. All of the rest, like Megan has said, they're very close to meeting. And I'll only reiterate again with the attempt not to circumvent the ordinance. Excuse me. If, if the only thing that is permitted is a custom style, but only to say adaptive reuse. So in order to go conventional, they'd have to see the variance. So it, the, the, the way here is meeting the qualifications, providing all of the recognizable material benefits that are needed to be a P U D, because they really couldn't do this as a search site plan. In staff's review, you've got all of the different waivers and making the overdose with you that would need to be addressed tonight if you're going to do affirmative action and make a recommendation to council. And then the motions for consideration are provided, excuse me, sorry, having a little brain fart here. They're broken down into whether the project provides or doesn't provide the recognizable material benefits that they're suggesting they provide. And then you've got a continuation of the motion for demonstrating or not, meeting or not, qualified or not, the difference, especially within ordinance, that they are required to, excuse me. And then you'd be recommending either approval or denial, if you so choose, to city council with action on the different waivers or deviations and then the specific conditions. And if you don't feel that the plan has sufficient information for you to make a determination this evening, you would postpone but providing additional clear direction that the applicant might do. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey, nope, thank you. Hey, nope, thank you. Probably have some questions for you as well, but let's get to the public hearing. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing to anybody online or in person that would like to speak to this project only, which is the Kentwood Place Preliminary PUD. So we opened a public hearing at 7:50. Is there anybody present that would like to speak to this? Anybody? I don't think we have anybody online, right?
And there's nobody on there.
Okay.
I can take up a minute. Let's just the, when an applicant submits a complete preliminary PUD plan, planning commission must conduct a public hearing before considering it in accordance with section 19.05 point D.
Thank you. And with that, we'll close the public hearing at 7:51.
Okay, so we, we have a lot in front of us here today from staff as well as the applicant. So this time I'll look to my fellow commissioners for a proposed motion. And then we can have some discussion on this and again, give the applicant some hopefully valuable feedback to move forward with. So again, at this time, we'll kind of wait if somebody would like to propose a motion, like being in our discussion. You wouldn't necessarily need to cite all of the conditions within the thing we could cite as stated. As stated for the record in, in the packet, if somebody did want to make a motion that includes all those. Or again, there is also the motion that would postpone the item. If we do postpone the item for them to address the conditions, we can, or we should at least have some discussion, giving them guidance on some of the questions that are outstanding still.
Make motion number one. You don't have to leave it all, but essentially based on the information provided by the applicant.
Karen, oh, sorry, you might want to speak right more directly in the mic. No, that's okay.
Motion number one, well, based on the information provided by the applicant staff, CWA, OHM, and DAFD. And following a public hearing conducted on July 1st, 2024, the planning commission determines that Kentwood Place Planned Unit Development application received April 2nd, 2024 provides following recognizable material benefits and then the five benefits that are listed there. So in other words, yes, qualifies as a PUD. And then further, we, the planning commission further determines the proposed PUD project demonstrates compliance with the general provisions in section 19.3. The design standards in 1904 and meets the intent of the PUD district standards in 1905E to qualify for PUD designation. And therefore, I'm sorry, planning commission recommends approval of the Kentwood Preliminary PUD site plan revision dated June 6th, 2024. And so.
I will second, but I'll also say, what?
I was just gonna say, so one thing though, with, with the motion is there are included on that are the deviations.
Yeah, I'm going to propose, yes, we, we.
Are you going to propose, or we could leave those hanging and modify the motion?
Yeah, we can then modify the motion.
Correct. Yes. Okay. Sorry. And then Jim, was it, do you want to add that after?
Yeah, I'll second, but I'll also say, although I really like this project, it's not as baked as a lot of projects come to us. And I also considered a motion to postpone and I'm open to that if that's where our discussion leads us. But I'm going to second so we can open up the conversation.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we did open up the discussion at this time. There is a motion. We're going to the motion will need to be amended for the deviations because those were not included. Are you going to include deviations now or?
Deviations and then modified will strike.
Okay, okay.
So it's, it's, it's affirmative on the deviations.
Okay, affirmative on deviations. We'll start the discussion. Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, we have a motion moved, Robert, support Cardi. We are now in discussion.
So I'd, I'd like to ask the applicant two questions to begin. We have had problems before where developers come to us and meet our standards for mixed use. And then they come back later and try to, after they've sold all of the project, but the first floor retail, they try to get us to convert the first floor retail to residential. And for the record, we hold the line on that. We've, to this point, held the line on that in every case. So I'd like to hear a little more from the applicant about the live work units. I'd like to hear how you intend on marketing them and what that, to you, what that looks like, because ultimately, you know, as the planning commission here, we're planning in line with our, with our master plan and it seems a little thin on information for that. So anything else you can provide on that, I'd be interested in knowing. And if I recall, when you were here the last time, it was a little unclear whether these were all going to be rental units, whether they're going to mix of rental units and condos, whether they're all going to be condos. So I didn't, I'd be interested in a little clarity on that too, if the applicant could provide it.
If somebody would like to address that, I don't know who from the team.
Hi, I'm Peyton Burns Brown and I'm here with Mr. Kent Brown. I think the plan is to have those live work units for somebody, in fact, we were talking about it on the way over, also somebody that might have be a special jewelry designer or something that would live there and then have a shop there. Or actually, I was mentioning to the planner who works for us in an township, he said, I'd buy one of those and he could have his office right there and live and, you know, live above and then of course have his commercial office right there. So that's the intent. The whole issue I think is we first bought this Baker Road property, which was an odd parcel. And the first design we saw filled up the entire parcel with one big structure. And we really didn't like that. And then through some I'd say serendipity, the forest property became available and it just opened everything up. And so it just tied it all together. Now, we understand that it's got to be commercial on an A corridor. But it's also, if you look at the homes around there, they're not commercial. And they're stone bases and they have porches and so you have to have, I think, a residential look to it. But then across the street, now we used to own the property at Baker and May. Baker and May, Baker and Ann Arbor Street. And so again, that was a mixed use. There was residential, there was where it was commercial. So that's kind of what we invited.
We had one applicant down that property was an artist, wanted to have a studio, wanted to be able to live and have a bedroom, have a place where they could also live. Now, this offers a much better living arrangement, but we were even off across the street. I think we believe there is a market for, for a live. I think we had concerns about a full blown commercial retail store type operation. And in our early discussions with the city, that was raised as, what do you do about delivery? What do you do about that? Where do people go park? There is, there, it just was not suited right there for that. It'll be better suited if we do our project because people can park in the public lot and walk through our walkway. But we believe there's a market for that and we, we wanted to establish, we purposely decided to do two phases so that we could establish the back part of the property and get the townhouses fully established. Our intent all along was to try and create a little community, a little community that reflected the look of Dexter. He specifically requested the architect was able to include the stone on the inside of the house as one of the three sightings that we knew. And we think that complements what designs are like throughout the community. But we took your comments especially about wanting to have some sort of commercial approach to Baker. And we, you know, we think that that's possible. It's, it's a more select market. And in some cases, it's going to take maybe some more time to find the right app.
And I know, I really do. Whether it's an attorney or, you know, somebody that just wants to have a solid practice, I think, I think they're gonna be pretty good at doing it. If I can also address the stack units in case anybody's concerned about the stack unit.
Sure.
My idea, because I wanted to provide more diversity. Not everybody's going to be able to afford a 2,000 square foot three-story townhouse. And by having some stack units, you can have somebody in there that's either single or small family that can afford something like that and then be right downtown. So, and hopefully you'll see that that it adds a little bit more to the complexity or diversity of this project.
Great, thank you. I think we have another question maybe for you.
It's just a follow-up to Jim's because I couldn't tell whether you would split up the live work. So, you know, if, if it comes in the package, you gotta live there too. Is that right? Or, or there's lived in the room, sort of house that they have, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's combined.
It's combined. Okay, so it's a different issue than, say, Jeffers.
Perfect, yes.
Correct comparison. Yes, that's good.
Condos versus rentals? You guys, it's all condos?
For sale.
Right, okay.
Master D.
Thank you.
Yep, okay, thank you.
I, while you're both up there, I feel like from just my perspective, rarely has an applicant listened to the planning commission as well as you have. And rarely has an applicant improved a plan that was already a pretty good plan as much as you have. It's a very nice project.
Thank you. We, we did try very hard to get as much input as we could and not only from the official sources, but we talked to other people in the community. That was also part of the motivation for the stack units is that you really need to have some one bedroom units. We need to have some smaller units. So that's why we did it. But, you know, it was originally designed that those will all be domhouses, a chance that they're heard inside units. So they did not give them opportunity for somebody who just needs to have that.
I really like the micro units. I really like the diversity of form, the different housing. I really like that you turned, well, I don't know for sure how you turn it, but I like the units facing the parking lot. I think it brings life to there, like it's a great job. Your whole team should, should feel proud about it.
Well, we do have a good team. But, you know, we're not developers. So this is our first foray into developing a project, but we'd like the community and I'm a downtown type person. And I just look forward to the mobility and, and the activity that you have downtown. I think people will enjoy that.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for the applicant while they're up there or we can always, we might always call you back? Yes, oh, Karen.
One, I couldn't tell, maybe it was there and I just missed it. What, what is facing on Baker, Building E? What's that look like?
Depends, I guess, on something else, I'm wondering if you're meeting with the council, whether or not we continue that way or do we go back to making those just condo units with the garages underneath? Because the original design, the footprint is, is the same.
My question relates to the units that are on Baker Road. And it has to do with the width of the drive relative to the fire access needs. As I understand it, if they're sprinkled, the fire, or the fire department might be willing to go to an 18-foot wide road with the adjacent sidewalk because they would have, because that would handle their access needs. But if I'm, and I could be mistaken here, if they're not sprinkled, that wouldn't be the case. And more of the, the access would be taken up by pavement, basically.
Well, we, that's, that's an issue we addressed along the way here and we we adjusted our plan to make sure that that sidewalk was reinforced so that it handled the fire truck. I guess I probably should deal with somebody smarter than me on this, but that's one of the things we, we dealt with is to make sure there was the 26 feet if necessary, using utilizing the sidewalk.
But that's non-sprinkled. Basically what that would mean is those are not sprinkled.
And that would not, yeah, sprinkle would not be required.
Less of the site would be available for buffer or other uses, given what you're talking about. And I understand the sidewalk's going to have to be able to, designed to be able to handle the load of a fire truck. But what I'm talking about specifically is the amount of room that is taken up by pavement sprinkled versus non-sprinkled.
Possess that. Well, yeah, I mean, there's, there's a cost, a cost issue, but but it, it, it doesn't, I don't think it changes the amount of concrete or the amount of hard surface you're talking.
I think it does.
Yeah, I understand, but, but there's still going to be a sidewalk there.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, but the driveway could be narrower is my point, but.
Well, I think, yeah, I think, I don't want to, yeah, the, because I think there's a, some of this is, I'm, I gotta be honest, I'm a little bit more confused because you had some things where you said, if we build a five-unit on Forest. But I thought you're built, aren't you building that for sure? You said it's going to be sprinkled.
We're, our plan is to build it.
Okay, so you're building it. So, okay, and then.
The five-unit by code has to be sprinkled, correct, Mr. Moore?
Correct. Okay, so I think.
The five-unit building has to be, so they are doing that.
Yes, no questions.
Correct. The in talking with Doug and he's online, we can ask for his input. The current life safety code requires the sprinkling. Because we have not adopted the most recent life safety code with the fire code, we can't make it mandatory.
For which buildings?
All of them.
For all of them.
Other than the five.
Other than the five, right, five unit, we're done, no questions, it's sprinkled. So the other questions, the other one is, right, we haven't adopted the current code.
So the chief doesn't feel that he can acquire it. And so what we're trying to do is find a way.
So I think, because in one thing, I, and I, I know, I, I know, I appreciate because of your efforts and a lot of your explanations were great. So I didn't mean to harp on just that one little inconsistency, but I, and then also, Michelle, though you said there's no curb, but I'm here, it shows a mountable curb on our site plan. So is there a mountable curb or no curb? Because that does make a difference and but also to that point, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Hill here about the width of the pavement. But in general, that could be reduced by the sprinkling, but also I was also wanted to clarify the fire comments because it does pinch down to the 18 feet or so near the back of that existing forest parcel. So I, I don't, I don't think they require continual 26, but I, okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. They, they can access that building with a 20, they have a space to put a 26-foot spread, basically.
Yes, so my understanding of the fire code requirements.
Yes, so my understanding of the fire code requirements for an aerial access truck is that. Along one side of the building, it needs to be twenty-six feet wide to accommodate the area of grass and outriggers and all the.
So at least one side has to have twenty-six, okay.
So, access to the buildings on the forest parcel, it's twenty-six feet all the way up there. So buildings A, B, and C have the twenty-six feet off that driveway. Buildings D and E have their twenty-six feet off the driveway coming in off of Baker. That paved area in between the two, where it kind of pinches down to eighteen feet. It's not intended for aerial access truck to be set up there to fight a fire. It's just for them to drive through. Which the eighteen feet is wide enough for them to drive through.
Okay, thank you. That's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to uh, yeah, make sure that was uh, clear.
And in the event that they don't drive through or choose not to drive through, the entrance off of Baker is less than a hundred and fifty feet, so. By code, they could back out and go back down Baker on Forest. Um, that's why that little. Kind of pavement bump out is provided there so that the fire truck and the garbage truck can back out and then pull forward out onto Forest. So there's a little turnaround provided in there.
Thank you. That helps. So, okay, so I think, I think we're clear. So actually, so the plan. And I appreciate the different ability to flex that, but I think we have to get, what is in front of us right here? Shows that twenty-six foot. I have, we have to assume that they're not sprinkled based on what we see here, because I don't want to get in this. Well, if they are sprinkled, it can be reduced. If it's not. We have to look at what's here in front of us. So if we don't like that, that's what we come in.
Currently only building A is sprinkled. The other buildings are under residential fair code, don't require sprinkling, so they're not proposed to be.
Correct, which means that we have a twenty-six foot, twenty-one foot drive with five foot.
Correct.
Right. So I think like, we don't necessarily need to go back and forth about that right now. That's what the plan shows. And if we don't like it, which I don't particularly like.
Fire is okay with it.
And fire, correct. Fire is okay with this. That's what I assume because they have a twenty-six foot. Uh, spread, basically, for lack of a better technical term.
Fire would be fine with one.
Right, okay.
The twenty-six feet. But as a complete drive aisle. It's not quite meeting engineering standards, so. If it, if you're fine with that, then that would be.
What's not to engineering standards? I mean, I, that's, that's where I was a little confused about what we're being asked.
If the, the twenty-one feet, we have a twenty-six foot drive aisle. Um, includes that sidewalk. That sidewalk is right at the property line. You're supposed to have two feet, the driveway is supposed to be two feet off the property. It's a minor thing.
But the sidewalk can be at the property line.
And and because, so the way, but I think the way it shows here, it's the sidewalk. Because it says it's a mountable curb between it.
Yes, but I think.
Talks about this is a twenty-six foot wide drive aisle. You don't see the separation until you look at the plan. So it's kind of like trying to do two things and.
Right.
And you just think you need to. Slice and dice this to make sure that you're comfortable with it, because it will be on the property line. And as I stated in my review, you get an errant driver or somebody not paying attention, going over that mountable curb. And the next, the property next door has, is only, that building is only seven feet away. From a safety, welfare, that criteria, that's why I've been.
On the sidewalk, correct.
So we have to, we have to underpin the sidewalk to take the weight.
Okay.
So it is the sidewalk that's reinforced to the standards of.
Okay, so I, so that at least from my perspective, I think, think that this clears up that end of it. So, yes.
So the um, sidewalk driveway slash driveway is right on the property line. Um, of the neighboring property, right on, right on the edge of that. Now. Here's another question along those lines. If that's the way it is, that's the way it is. But it would make sense to me to. At least make them look different, rather than a stretch of twenty-six fi- uh, feet or whatever it is. Concrete or asphalt or whatever you're gonna finish in that inlook. Can, would it make sense for the walk portion of this to be a different material of some sort? So that when you're on the walk, you know you're on the walk, and when you're on the drive, you know you're on the drive, that sort of thing?
The sidewalk is proposed, it's concrete, the drive is proposed as asphalt. But we can look at some other kind of.
Okay.
Like damp concrete or some coloring or something to differentiate it visually.
All right, yeah.
We have done this as a builder, developed in other projects. One of them's actually uh. Gordon Hall down here from L R C. Um, that we actually did, you had the asphalt, you had the curb, which is your general ready concrete. And the sidewalks, we did enough colored concrete to differentiate it. Because there was, so people didn't, the people, the residents sometimes have a hard time differentiating. The height difference from a mountable curb sidewalk. So we put the street color differences so they could see. But it could easily be done that way.
Okay, that wasn't at Gordon Hall, by the way. That was next door, but nevertheless. Um, I have another question all related to this. These are my questions. And just like Jim here, I think it's a. I think this is really gonna be a wonderful plan, but there there are those little technicalities that kind of strike me. How are you gonna know? How will, if I'm walking down the street, how am I going to know that that's a public walk that I can take? To get over to the parking lot? The, you know, you, I know, situations like that, when I run across them or come across them. You always think, am I trespassing on, you know, this? It's not clear typically that that's a way that the general public can go through there. So maybe, I don't know what you solve that with, maybe some signage or something, public walkway to wherever, something like that.
Just to add. All right, so just to follow up on that item though. So is it, are you gonna record a public access easement through there? A public access easement. Because without a public access easement, it means nothing. You can say it's public, but it could be revoked tomorrow. And because we know, so I think that that's a significant issue that I think needs to be identified because you're, and and again, I like, I like. That that idea, but I can see and you, and I appreciate your intent and and you guys seem very enthusiastic about that, but. You know, you guys won't, I don't know if you're living there or whatever, it doesn't matter. The residents there, as soon as people start walking across that, they're gonna put up signs that say private. Or they're gonna gate it. It could, yes, but I think it could also be, uh, but I think there should be a public access easement. Because a master deed can also be changed without permission from the ownership, or I mean, without the permission from the city. And if you're claiming that as a public benefit.
It's gonna help with it.
It's gotta be recorded for sure.
Having done that in other projects, yes, you can record a private act or the.
Public access easement.
Through there. And again, we would suggest differentiating with some type of.
Yeah.
Concrete, so it's really obvious where it's gonna be.
Because I think, right, that is a challenge with that access that like, uh, Mr. Ellis said here that, but. But my concern is, is again, that I, we, we have all the greatest intentions here, but as soon as we move, uh, move on. People are, the residents there don't want people cutting through there. So it it's gotta be guaranteed, but I think we've got that issue addressed.
And you can address it that way and with the sign.
Yes, with master D signage, but but again.
Materials and textures, it gives a pretty good indication and. Ninety percent of the people will follow it, ten percent.
Correct.
That's life in general.
Well, yeah. Okay, thank you. Uh, additional.
Related to that, Michelle, this is related to the same thing you were talking about, that they'll need an agreement with the D V A or is this separate location?
Separate location, the sidewalk on the D V A parking lot property has to have its own. Uh, easement agreement and maintenance agreement with them. The easement agreement for the public sidewalk coming from Baker, room to that point would be a se- would be a separate. From the property owners.
Uh, additional, again, we have um. There is, I mean, we could launch directly into talking about deviations, because either way, whether this goes forward tonight or if it's postponed, I think. If we can give them some feedback on this, uh, there's a lot of deviations that. That are recorded, yes.
If the, if you are going forward with this, the one thing that you would want to amend the motion for would be to add. Subdivision S for that public access easement.
Okay.
That we're going forward, everybody remembers it.
Yes, great point. Thank you. Okay, so um, are there any other general comments kind of, or or if we want to?
One quick question.
Yes.
On page or of in a um. Elevations that um, the that sheet's on page eleven, it looks like. The turnaround and just on that page, the fire looks like it's taking over the pocket park. Maybe I'm missing where the pocket park is, but in all of, every page it's shown looking like it's maybe green space or something. Then suddenly on that fire, there was even a fire turnaround, it shows. It's still green space on every page except that one where it's shown as a turnaround from fire.
So that's the swing of the back part of the truck. So the tires aren't actually driving on that part. That's just kind of. The back of the truck is gonna swing partially over that area. So the pavement area is, is the same.
I guess while the, um, I don't know if this is a question for you, Candace, while you're up there, but regarding that. That paved area, I mean, we do keep referring to it as a pocket park, but from what I'm hearing from fire, there can be absolutely nothing in there. So.
That's for the, the pedestrian plaza area, the paved area. That's kind of.
We're not including this as well in that pocket park, okay?
Correct, because we can't put any.
Thought we were talking about.
Structures in that.
Perfect, thank you.
It can be used for temporary, like I said, if yoga studio wants to do an outdoor yoga.
Space for something. It'd be a shame, but I understand. Yes. Um, okay, thank you. That clarifies that. Um. Additional other, let's see if we have, we can go into the deviations.
Want to do deviations, let's do deviations.
Yeah, but yeah, let's launch uh, directly into those for now. I mean, I have a couple of other comments. Actually, I'm sorry, let me say them before we go to deviations. Uh, just because again, in general, I I really like to project the density. I have absolutely no issue with the density because there's a great mix of units. I love the flats. That that's awesome. And um, I appreciate using the P U D as a mechanism to do that. Um, given some of the challenges with our arguments and the way this is laid out, because also I agree that there could be a big block building up there. With the same amount of density or more that would not add any character or emphasis on it. So really, the only kind of questions I have. One, um, and I feel extremely strong about this, and it relates to the next issue that we're discussing as a public hearing, is the frontage. Along Baker Road. If if you look at every other structure along there, it has a front porch. Everyone, and you, and one of you guys even mentioned that's important, but these have no front porch. And I think it's important also to look at, you look at similar type units that are built along Grand, the townhomes. And they have little mini porches, but you'll see almost every one of them now have their benches out on the sidewalk. Like they're, they moved out to the sidewalk because they don't have anywhere to sit. So do you need to, are you gonna?
I was just gonna address that. So we didn't show as much definition for buildings D and E because they were phased two. But the intent is that the facade of those would be the same as building C, so they would have a porch.
Well, we're, which, so again, and that, and this plan set here, we don't have labels building Cs. It's like five units, so that's a two unit.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Elevations, floor plans and ring rooms.
That's where you come.
Each building, it will make it much clearer. Get that that's, there may be some redundancy, but.
Right. So I think to that point too, and I'm, I'm look, so. So then can we not even pay attention to these elevations that are here for us? Because if they're not, what's gonna be built?
Yeah, those are what's gonna be built. These elevations are correct. Yeah, on building C, the front elevation.
Well, wait, wait, on my plan set, is that the two unit building?
Look at, look at the eleven by seventeen's in your packet. These were the ones that came in.
So which, wait, which point, A, which one, A? There's A one point three, one point four. In our, but Michelle, the elevations, the, is that a required for preliminary?
They should, they should have very clear direction and what they're.
If you look at sheet A two point one and the.
Okay, which one? Sorry, which one?
To A two point one in the submitted plan set.
Why don't have an A two point, oh, oh, on this side. Okay, got it. So I see, so that's.
Elevation, building C. There's a porch. It's a shared porch for the two. Front doors.
Right, but I, I meant, yes, but I meant like a usable porch, because that you, I, I don't, nobody. I mean, you might be able to put one bench on there or a chair, but like what I mean, like that's similar to.
For a porch, not a stoop.
Correct. Yes, that is a stoop in my definition. I think, and I, and I get why, because I see the design and there's windows there. There's daylight windows. But again, I don't know how you could look at Baker Road facade and walk up down there, all those houses, and not say that there's a front porch. Not a stoop should belong on here. Every single structure has a front porch on it. So like, that meets this kind of form. That was exactly our intent. So I think, I think it can be done, but it, and I think that would be a huge addition to the residence. It, it both this and on Forest, because like I said, go to the Grand Street Townhomes right now and you'll see that they have a very similar setup, except it's not shared. And they've all moved their benches, not all of them, but tables and stuff out on their little access sidewalk, because they want someplace to sit. So. Again, please, I I feel very emphatic about that, that, that is an essential. To fit it into that screen, and you can have that with an office work as well. So I think I would just, again, that was one thing I felt strongly about as far as the elevations.
Now, before we move on.
Oh, yes. You mentioned that. Okay, thank you. Yes, that's very.
Before you move on, these are, we're talking Baker, these are the, the live work units.
Correct.
Well, I, I have two general thoughts too. First of all, I don't think our job here is to like, hold every structure on a street to look like the other structures. As a matter of fact, I think that's.
Correct.
I think that's kind of boring.
Correct.
And I don't think a porch is necessarily the right form for live working. I think you're right, if this was a residential and we're gonna have people sitting out there, I think it actually is potentially a negative on the unit. Because it's potentially a negative for, for how that business is presenting on the front to the street. So I, I just want to represent to you.
Yeah, I mean, there is the.
There's not unanimity among the planning committees.
Correct, because I feel clearly very, but I mean, I would actively disagree that I think. Others like those office directly next to it was used as, actually, the one we're gonna be dealing with. A little bit later is the bed or the Airbnb, that was used as an office for a long time and it had a big front porch on it. I, I, I mean, I think.
Because they converted residential.
Correct, but I think fitting in form, but okay, anyway, I, you can clearly see there's some dissension here.
If you're moving forward, because the final plan.
Yeah, has to. Well.
So it's not like you can just say, figure it out.
So, yeah, so we can have, okay, so let's, let's put a pin in that when we're discussing our deviation. So that's good, so that we give them clear. Because that is, I understand that that is a significant redesign. Um, all right, uh, so now, of course, I lost my place. So, yeah, here we go.
Uh, to allow or not allow the two family and live work uses, when two family and live work uses are not permitted.
For.
Type A site on a four-door street in a central business district.
But just to be clear, we had, we were not discussing that. Matt was giving his personal impressions on certain things.
Correct.
We hadn't gotten into the deviations yet.
No, 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 yeah, sorry. That, I wanted to add that before the deep, like, that's not a deviation.
Right.
Yeah, don't know, that was just a comment on the, on.
You wanted to deviate from the deviation.
Correct, well, yeah, I guess deviate from what was presented, but I, actually, let's not.
Identified for fortunately.
Well, I don't know that we need.
Right.
Right.
We wouldn't.
So, no, we don't, because it's not, but that was just my comment, yeah, sorry, that was my comment, that's why I wanted to say it before we got into deviations.
I thought you were starting to get ready.
Well, I did say that, and then I said, let me back up, let me address my couple issues, one other one before we get into deviations, the bicycle parking. More than anybody, I appreciate bicycle parking, however, I really question the location of that, one, it looks like it's in our right of way. If this is correct. It looks like it's in the right way, or it overhangs, both on four, on Grand, sorry, on Baker and on Forest. So I, I don't. And again, for the live work. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, but I think it. Most like. So, and I. And then both on. Forest as well, so I think that that just needs, and I, I don't know that, right? I would say that's less friendly to live work than a.
Let me ask.
Porch.
Are you comfortable with them doing an easement?
Oh, yeah, yeah, although, I mean, it's right next, I would want to be careful that it's away from the sidewalk and that enough, because people put their bicycles. The front tire there, and then the back's gonna hang over the sidewalk, so I guess, just, I think that can be adjusted, they have the room. So I think, just, make sure there's proper clearance, adjust it back, because, as I said, I think people don't put their bikes properly in. I don't know how many bikes we use there, but, but the sidewalks use quite frequently, I know that.
So bicycle parking must be all within private property.
Or, or I think, yeah, yeah, exactly, I think so, because I don't like that, the overhang over the sidewalk would. That potential is too great, I think, that, I mean, it happens all the time.
Okay.
Okay, so now I'm, I'm done for now.
Let me.
Yes, oh, okay.
Drag this on a little bit further. From a biker's standpoint. Most bikers who have a bike worth riding on are not gonna park it out there anyway. They're gonna want it in a more secure. Location further on site, I'm not parking my bike on the street and. Where anybody could do whatever they wanted to, so that's my point, and it's just a point.
I bought my bike at Meyer and I'll park it on the street.
Well, I think, I guess.
They're there because the requirement is that we provided hoops on the.
Yes.
So that's why they're there, obviously, if you would prefer that they be somewhere else, we can look at putting bike prices somewhere else, that's, that's why they're located.
Yeah, I mean, my comment, right, no, I appreciate, you're right, I think, just my comment in general.
Yeah.
I think adjusting that so that there's proper clearance, I think, but, yes.
I apologize for my comment.
No, thank, no, well, that's, it's, it's, it's a valid comment, hey, we are valid comments, so. All right, I think that kind of addressed, but, but again, so we're gonna get to the deviations. And I think, okay, all right, let's get into that, so. The first one is the two family live and work uses. Not permitted, type A, quarter street. So that's on the bottom, looking at the bottom of page thirteen, so the motion made. Is, was in the affirmative for all those.
Correct.
Yeah, so that would allow.
I don't.
You go to the one forty five.
Yeah, that would be better, because I'm looking at the other.
Wait, what? You're saying they're allowing, I thought that.
No, you're in a, you're in a fire station, I thought there was an issue.
Still right here, yeah.
No, that's okay.
Good thing I didn't say that aloud.
When two family and live work uses aren't permitted.
Are you clear?
Could I, could I ask you for just?
Yes, please.
You still have a lot on your agenda today?
Yes, that's why.
Since I, I believe you've all read all of the different deviations. The motion was.
Hope so.
Me affirmative. Is there anyone that agrees with an affirmative motion of deviations?
I guess I would like to hear, though, really quickly, is on B and C, probably from the architect, Mr. Moore, why? Why are those not being provided, the? And again, I'm clearly not an architect, but B and C, the cornices expression, like, is there a good reason why those aren't being provided? Well, but there's other options in there as well, that's why I was trying to. Like, if I had a. So. See the front. Expression lines before, so the cornices, right, yeah, I guess you couldn't add a cornice through that, so I'm looking, this would apply correctly. Michelle, to all of the buildings. Yeah, so even the ones that are interior, which. Okay. Okay, so second question, okay, thank you, second, that's great, second, so the facade. Window lintels and sills, sills, sorry, shall, sills shall. Be provided as required, so. It looks like from. What exactly, could you just give us a little layman term breakdown of the lintels and sills on the architectural elevation? Just really quick, because it seems. Like some of them have partial.
Yeah, in some places where there's mostly virtual, but.
Yeah.
So that was gonna be appropriate.
Oh, right. Yes, yes, clearly, okay, I. Okay, it's right, I'm, all the, yes, Megan. Thank you.
Due to the residential nature of the architecture, I think it would be more appropriate. To apply the architecture that's required for the house building form. That's in the zoning ordinance rather than the other ones, because it assumes generally.
Like a built, like.
Generally a. With a, with a, with a flat roof or, you know.
Okay. Yes, perfect, thank you, all right.
So, no, they stay.
No, they stay, they stay there, but I just had those questions on what exactly were, and, and the responses, again, given the form that's being constructed, make. Obvious sense, and some of them do have that, so.
B and C would be shall not be.
Are there any?
It's affirmative to, you're allowing them not to put them in.
Oh, right, that's. Yeah, the affirmative, correct, yeah, that's, we make sure we all understand that, that just got me, but, and then the front edge ones, yeah, I, I think, given the site designs and things are. Reasonable, we're only talking about a foot. Okay, and again, I think some of these, in my personal opinion, are okay, given this location, that's why I don't like granting a lot of deviations, the codes that we fairly recently. Put forward, but. Site context, okay, other comment about the deviation standards, and then we have, again, we do have a large agenda, but we have. A large list of conditions there too, so I want to get, see if there's any feedback on. On that as well, our planning, in the planning consultant. Okay, well.
Did I forget anything?
No, I don't think so, I.
Each other letters.
I didn't see anything, just reading them.
So, and again, Michelle, for my sake as well, maybe other planning commissioners, maybe just me, can you read, so this is a preliminary PUD site plan review. So when they come back for, what are the, the elements that really are a little bit in flux here? Regarding the preliminary to final.
So with the preliminary. You don't have the full engineering. You've got a flavor of it, you've got a flavor of the landscape details, things like that. Everything gets finalized when they come into the plan. So it's full engineering, it's full detailed landscaping, it's full detail, all of their. Building elevations, floor plans, et cetera. They will provide a plan that has all of that detail and meets whatever conditions of approval you give. And then any of these deviations you're providing. We require that they be notated on the plan.
Right, they should, right, they'll be. So we're, preliminary tonight, we are granting these deviations, or we're recommending them, basically, so they can go forth and design, fine tune that based on these. Deviations, and then come back for final.
Night is a recommendation to city council.
Right, okay.
Everything else is allowed. And, but.
Correct.
Needs to be amended to a flight.
And when it comes back, all of the conditions need to be addressed on the.
Plus the easement.
So, a, a, a quick. Look through here, I, I, I mean. I don't see any huge does, design changes, I think, again, one of our biggest discussions was regarding the act, the drive access, but. Think for now, we go forward with what we're shown. Okay. All right, so we.
So, and, is applicant must address the safety concerns cited herein regarding drive aisles and sidewalk? If I'm understanding, you're all fine with how it's proposed on equivalent, correct? That's the consensus of the board.
I mean, it is a mountable curb that's shown there, right?
Then that one would be. Struck out. Because if you're amending the motion, it would be struck out. Because you, you haven't given them direction to do anything different.
Right.
The proposal.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, that's correct, so, yeah, the motion for is. On the current plan, so, right, okay. All right, thank you for your patience, everybody, I think. I'm sorry. Oh, so the, so last, all right, one last thing regarding the porches, if. There is, obviously, you felt, I felt pretty strongly about the porches, do we have, but, Mr. Cardy disagrees, so. Do we have a, I, I don't think we're gonna, obviously, they have a consensus, given that, we, we disagree, but, is there any, can we give the applicant some additional? We don't, we're missing a couple of members here tonight, but.
Just do a raise of hands.
If there's, I mean, we can simply raise a hand, but is there anything additional comments? That anybody would like to add to that, or?
I mean, I like a.
Simple vote.
If they can't design it that way, that might be different, but.
Doesn't fit with the design, you have to go up some stairs, substantial number of stairs. Or just really no. Not no, but it's, it would be a major design in that. Building.
Well.
It is.
True, but that's our ability to give feedback on it, but, okay, so I'm hearing that is important. So I don't hear a ton of extra, may. All right, so, and Mr. Hill, do you have an opinion?
I align with Jim here, along the lines that this is not a living unit at the.
Correct.
There, it's a work unit, and a porch may not be as important. In that situation.
Oh.
Except the person's gonna live above.
Right, that's where, again, I, I think we're losing.
They're gonna go.
Crack of that, is that, this still, at the heart of it, it's a residential unit, and we don't know that. I don't know how we're gonna regulate somebody's gonna work out of that place, anyway, but. That's beside the point, I mean, we can't, but, okay, so. Wow, do you have an opinion? I have another chance, okay, now, so, I mean, I don't, you know, I was obviously emphatic about that, I don't hear a ton of support other than here, I mean. A little bit here, but, again, given the live work design, I think. Go forward with the comments that you heard, and we'll. Well, we're just seeing a plan if this moves forward. Any other feedback or additional, so I guess it looks like we're gonna be voting, well, we are voting no matter what, on the motion, to move it forward to. City Council. As a preliminary PUD recommendation, okay?
I just have one more question.
Yes.
Can I assume that the DDA is, has reviewed this, and they're on board with the easement that's been discussed? And show?
They have not seen the easement yet.
The location.
But, yes, in general.
Use, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question, but by the time for final.
Oh, yeah, all that will be.
Right, okay, so again, I think some comfort level on here, this is preliminary, so. Okay, all right, I think, any other questions, comments, I think we've done this, we've done enough, give you a ton of feedback, so, all right. Michelle, are you ready for a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Edley?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Yes, okay, move forward, thank you. Okay, moving along, thank you all, somebody grabbed Tom, whoever Tom went. He's probably fell asleep back there. Candace, can you text Tom?
For a little while, whatever he did back there made it.
Oh, really?
Rip that off the wall.
I know.
But if that were not illegal, I would have ripped it off the wall.
Okay, all right, yes, well, while somebody's recruiting Tom. We'll move on to our second public hearing, which is the tax amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding the city council request. Section eleven, point eleven, point B, point two, point B, point I, of the zoning ordinance, you'll have. For the waiver of the front door. Primary front door facing a public road, okay. All right, so I think we just have a staff presentation for this, I don't know. Michelle, or Meg, probably just Michelle, right?
Yeah, I'll do this very quickly. Jenna will be presenting the next one for you. Okay, but, I'm gonna run through this real quickly, we went through this ad nauseam at your last meeting. When you agreed to move this on. Based on the history of and intent of the Baker Road border, the master plans, through zoning ordinances. Excuse me. I offered language that utilize or is the exact same language. That was in your previous zoning ordinance. That said, buildings shell front towards and have at least one pedestrian entrance facing onto a public road. The planning commission may, may permit buildings to face towards and have at least one pedestrian entrance. Facing a side yard, provided that defined pedestrian access routes are provided between the entrance and the public sidewalk. I kept this very narrow, utilized exactly what was there before. Because that's what. That's what contributed or helped to facilitate. What is currently existing on the board, and what has been cited as reason why it should have been allowed for. The Jackson Wellness Center. I'm sorry, the senior center. If you are comfortable with this. You would recommend, you would just. Recommend it to city council, recommend approval. If you're not, you're going to recommend denial. It still goes through city council and they will take action. Depending on what they want to do.
Right.
Okay, given that, I feel like, I feel like we've been set up, this should not have been on the agenda, we've already said no to this, and I'm angry about it, I'll be honest. It should not have been put on the agenda without asking us if we wanted to put it on the agenda, because we are the planning. Was, that was what you just, I wasn't here last meeting, was that explained?
Yes, yeah, we did schedule it for a public hearing to, for it to be heard tonight as a public hearing, it doesn't mean that.
But now you know what's gonna happen, if we vote it down, the town is just gonna, the council is.
Well, true, but council does have the ability to direct us, have, direct us to do action, so, I think that's, that's what they, correct, I think that's what they asked us. To do, so.
We hadn't put it on the agenda, they asked, if we hadn't put it on the agenda, this opportunity wouldn't be presented.
It, it could be, well. I guess we could have refused to put it on the agenda.
I specifically asked Michelle that, we could have refused to put it on the agenda.
I guess, I, we did move to set a public hearing, so I guess that, that I felt so.
And I did not, I did not understand that if we had a public hearing, and we voted it down, it would still go to council.
Still goes to council, because you remember, you're still.
Correct, so you're saying if we hadn't even scheduled.
Understand, I now I understand, and I didn't ask the right question to you, hundred percent, it's on me.
Okay, no, I understand, Jim, yeah, I think.
This is small town nonsense, small town insider nonsense. And why, please carry those comments. This is a favoritism.
Jim, I agree with you.
This is.
Okay, why don't I get too far in the.
Worst thing we've been asked to do since I've been on planning commission, I've been on a long time.
Yeah. Yes, thank, thank, no, I appreciate that, Jim.
One of the things that has happened is the applicant did vote in the ZDA. Last month, and the ZDA did grant the waiver. It was a. Three one vote. But it. It did get granted. Is playing, is council going to? Go ahead and approve something if you, if you were to recommend denial? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, right, we.
If you recommend approval, are they?
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's part, I, I see your point about even putting it as a public hearing, but I think that's. I mean, that is part of our role, is, is we're asked to do something from, doesn't mean we agree with it, and I will be honest, I don't agree with it.
We could have not done it.
But, I, I suppose you're right, but, I mean, I did talk with Michelle, I thought it was reasonable to at least. Give it a, a chance, even though, like I said, personally, I don't agree with it either, and I agree with your comments, I don't, I think we already had our say a couple of times, but. And you know how I feel about it, but I think either way, I think it was fair to schedule is a public hearing to have, and, but, that's council's prerogative. Always to disregard what we, what we say, and move forward, so, but, I. I appreciate that feedback about in the future, you know, mental note, so.
Before we move forward, I have a question for Michelle.
Yes.
Under Roberts, can I move to remove it from the agenda? Right now.
I don't know.
I.
I don't.
Don't, no.
You've already approved the.
Well, but we've said a public, this is a public hearing. Well, but we've set a public, this is a public hearing, so we have to hold a public hearing.
All right.
Yeah, so I think.
I've had myself.
Yeah.
Are you, is the issue that if we had said no, then council couldn't touch the ordinance?
Correct.
There's a mult, there's a variety of issues.
Okay, well, then we'll have to.
Yeah.
But I think that's the bottom line, I think, is that if we hadn't even scheduled a public hearing. Then it wouldn't even, there would be no live item. Now we have an item that we have to act on, and no matter what we do, it goes forward to city council.
The issue is, we already said no to this. We specifically said no to it. And they said, put it on your agenda, so that when you vote it down again, now that we've had a public hearing, we can vote it, we can overrule you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
After we voted, no.
Well, well, it was, it wasn't actually an action item the first time we got it, for feedback.
Said we don't wanna.
But you're correct, but I think Michelle then got direction from council.
Oh, I don't think it's Michelle's.
Right, no, no, I know you don't, I'm just, yeah, I don't, no, I agree, I don't think you think that, but I'm just saying, I think then she, she works for council ultimately. She has.
And that's where we.
If on the agenda, I guess we could have refused to hold a public hearing.
Which is what, if I had known this, and I didn't ask the right questions, until this very moment when Michelle said it. If I had known that, I would have been here last time fighting to not do this, but I.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, like I said, I admit for my fault that I didn't even necessarily consider not putting it on an agenda, but, um. Well, I don't even know that I necessarily have that ability, but.
So.
I, I mean, I guess it technically could be tabled. It, it could be tabled.
So remember, you've got your motion.
Table just goes off.
Michelle, what page is this on?
On page one twenty. You can postpone it. I, and that is up to date on parliament hearing.
No, I, right, right, we're kinda going to the weeds, but it's a good, really good questions, but you're right, I don't think any of us are up to speed on that, um. But, or tabling, it just takes, postpone, you have to come back, a date cert, and I think what Jim may be more comfortable. Tabling, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying.
I moved to table.
Tabling it.
But we're not sure we can do this, is my question?
We can table.
I moved to table it before we hold the public hearing, because. I think if we hold the public hearing. We've taken action. So I would move to table it before we hold the public.
Okay, can we, yeah, I guess we can table the item before. Okay, is there a second? While I'm still turning, okay, so Roberts, that would be to table the item. I don't know if. Uh, yeah, I think we, before the public hearing. Okay, um. I'm not sure, Megan, do you have, I'm sorry, I don't know, were you, sorry, were you looking up something? I caught you off guard, but do you, have you encountered a similar type thing? In, in your different experiences, because this is the first time I've come across this, and it's a good question, so, I. Like, can we table before the public? I know we can table it. Can we table before the public hearing?
It's always something, isn't it? And I'm usually the one causing it.
To answer your question, this particular circumstance in my twenty year plus career, I have not encountered.
Yes, yes, good, it makes me feel slightly better.
Yes.
Michelle probably too, right?
When looking at your zoning ordinance, section twenty-three oh three amendment procedure, upon initiation of amendment, work session, a public hearing, to consider the proposed amendment shall be scheduled before. Notice that hearing shall be given per, see law that it does. While on the public hearing, the planning commission shall identify and evaluate all factors relevant to the petition and shall report its findings and recommendations to city council. The planning commission shall consider the criteria listed in section twenty-three oh six for requested amendments and standards of regulations in the text. So this doesn't necessarily account for postponement. It just says that you should, this is the actions that are taken. So however, if you have rules, which I am not familiar with and not in the zoning ordinance in terms of rules or procedures or bylaws that allow the table and postponing, uh, that could come into play in here, but reading just the zoning ordinance, tabling. It says shall, and then that you shall after the planning, after the public hearing, it's how that you should make a, you shall make a report to the city council, and then they take action.
But that's if. If we hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
If we hold a public hearing, we have to take a vote. It seems, that seems pretty clear.
Yes.
Could one of our votes be tabled?
I don't think. Well, there's a motion to table.
There's a motion to table, we have a second. The worst thing to do is Scott, the worst thing that happens is Scott wins out, tells Michelle, we gotta come back and do it next month.
That's true.
Okay, um.
That would buy a look into the details.
Additional, uh, other feedback, so right now, we would be essentially tabling it with, unless further direction from this city attorney. We'll see what if Tom and Michelle have.
Tabling it would be. Maybe that will drop. Yes.
Do you have an update? Yes.
The agenda can be changed by a two thirds vote.
Could you say that one more time?
After an agenda has been adopted by the assembly, no change can be made in it except by a two thirds vote. A vote of a majority of the entire membership or the members can sign.
Okay, so.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
That would be.
So we would need five, seven, yeah.
Two.
But it sounds like.
That removes it from the agenda.
To remove it, if we had five of seven.
You have to move the.
Thank you for looking up to.
Yeah, and you're so, thanks, Tom, um.
I'm gonna draw my motion.
Okay.
And I'm gonna move to change the agenda, and I'm gonna see if we got five votes.
Okay, so you're gonna.
If I gotta say, or.
But can you be exactly, what, what are you moving?
I move to amend the agenda to chi, to take item four B. Text amendment to article eleven, section eleven, point eleven, point B, point two, point C, point one, the zoning ordinance. To remove it from the agenda, from tonight's meeting agenda.
Okay, so moved, Cardy?
Second.
Okay, second Roberts? Okay, so that would amend the agenda to remove this item.
And I'll add.
Yes.
Since the Z B A has already approved. The only pending project that this would apply to. It's moot and therefore should be removed from the agenda.
Okay.
And all the remaining parcels on Baker should not be affect, affected by a change that was driven by one property.
Okay, excellent, thank you. All right, any other additional feedback on that?
I, I would just like to say, I agree with that, and I said as much at council that the avenue for this was to go to the Z B A, it, you know, well, we couldn't guarantee anything through that avenue. It seemed very clear in our meeting that there was a lot of support for the variance. And so for me, procedurally, this is just completely unnecessary, regardless of whether or not it's tied to one project. But the fact that it is makes it even more ridiculous to me.
Yeah, I have to say, like. That's, this is what the Z B A is for.
Exactly.
Like no issue with the Z B A approving this change. The Z B A is gonna hear a lot of changes and some they'll approve and some they won't, but that, we got a procedure.
Exactly.
And, and ultimately, they follow the procedure, which is why we can remove this.
Okay, all right, so any other comments to that? Otherwise, we'll take a, a roll call vote, please. All right, roll call vote, please.
Over.
Voting yes to remove it from the agenda.
Roberts?
Yes.
Ely?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes, to remove from the agenda.
Phil?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Walsh.
Uh, yes. Okay, so we're moving on to the public hearing for items, our new item C, which was added, uh, let me find my. There we go, um, thirty, so, pretty much right next door to where we were just, uh, discussing the previous project. So thirty-one forty-one Baker Road, uh, vacation. The, uh, vacation rental, sorry, let me get my things all in order here, okay, so, um. At this time, do we have the, uh, applicant, would the applicant like to step forward and give us a little, uh, a brief intro on your project?
Sure.
We have all your information in the packet here that was provided to us today. Uh, I, I think we can all look in it, unless anybody wants the projection, but I think otherwise.
Computer diets would be great.
Oh, awesome, computer diet, oh, great, because of you, okay, but we have it, so we can do it, so.
I don't have a packet except on my phone.
I, okay, sure. But I think, do you want it displayed on the screen or do you want the extra, I mean.
Whatever is.
Okay, yeah, I don't care. Yeah, whatever is, if it's quickest to go up on the screen, is that quick, Michelle?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I always make it on the screen, the online people can see it.
Perfect, all right.
The presentation is in your packet. It's the, um.
Yeah, they, they want it on the screen. They want it on the screen.
So can you share this, are you able to get it up on that screen?
Just take a moment.
We just probably ask it when she, she's gonna bring up the presentation, but, I mean, you can kinda, we do have your presentation here, so I'm assuming that everybody has read through it. So probably if you want to just take the high, the, the most important, relevant points that pertain to this, that'd be good, because we did review it in the packet.
Uh, my name is Jim Portigill, um, I'm one of the, of the house, uh, thirty-one forty-one Baker, just down the street from what we were all talking about. Um, we're, uh. The, the lot we were talking about previously, and then the house next to it is on the private office, then our home there. So we purchased the house, um, just a couple of months ago, um, we fell in love with it, um, we did the, uh, we showed up in the house. Uh, we thought it'd be a perfect opportunity to do a, um, it's set up very nicely inside, nice spaces, very, um, open spaces. So, um, this is, this is our proposal, um, as the front porch, as you see. We have no intentions of.
Thank you.
Changing the outside, we love the color, we love the, we are updating it, if you can see the house was, it was provided by Randy Miller, who lived there quite a while. Um, or in the house, um, it was originally built in eighteen fifty, it's been in front of home. Um, you can see over time, you know, there've been, uh, different owners, um. Our, our intent is to sort of name it, like, you know, through like the different vacation rental sites, the Francis House, just to kinda give it sort of a feel. Sort of the notch, like the longer, so, and the forms of this. So we, you know, we were part, acquired the house in May, um, this is just a little history about our home. We actually live on Walsh Road in the old Walsh family farmhouse, so it's eighteen seventies, so we're pretty familiar with, um, tons of work and lots of work on the houses, there's extensive bonds and all of them's out there, I'm doing the speedy version, works, I know, I don't want to keep them here online. Um, this is just a little sample of, we use vacation rentals often, some trips like to Luddington, um, to, uh, we went to Europe a couple of years ago, staying in the hospital in Amsterdam, just talking about, just like, you know, Airbnb is the experience that we enjoy. We think Dexter's a great place to do it, um, for families, uh, we have relatives coming in and out of town or, you know, kid, older children coming in from out of town. Um, our house rules next, um, we know Dexter, it's a quieter community, we're not looking for bad, like some party place where there's, you know, twenty people cramming in there and going crazy, so we're, we're running the house as one unit, there, it's not like separate spaces where people can come in. Um, our, our goal is four to six people, we think primarily it'll be more couples, maybe couples with kids. Um, our plan is, it is only a one bedroom house, at some point, someone removed the wall upstairs, so it's a very spacious upstairs. So we are proposing at least, um, have like a king size bed there, well, a couple of ways that people have kids or anything available, and then a sofa bed downstairs. Um, and then just talking about just how it fits into Dexter, Dexter's master plan, um, just, you know, bringing more people to Dexter. We can give you the walkability to where it is, and thank you to the folks prior to talking about the walkability. And right into that, um, also, we have own rents, we do own two rentals in Ann Arbor as well. Um, one since two thousand and five, it's been a rented space in two thousand and ten. We make sure we follow, follow all of Ann Arbor's, um, rental laws, all the houses are permitted, inspected regularly. I forgot to include all that, I do have that, if you guys want to see, but all up to date on the inspections, but. Um, in that packet also, we included from, I think, probably the last four from each house. Uh, letters, recommendation from tenants, just how we maintain the houses, how we keep them up, also from neighbors for both of the houses, just that we, you know. When we advertise the houses and we, um, list them, it is Ann Arbor, and this is actually like two blocks from the stadium. So, but we advertise like it's not a party house, we want this to be, it's a neighborhood where families live and people live. Uh, going on to the next one, um, we initially, we initially talked about doing those houses as, um, vacation rentals, but at the time, I was working multiple jobs, we just knew we couldn't put the time in, so this just goes to a little bit of, we realize the demands of this house. You know, we'll take, you know, you might have someone staying there Monday and Thursday, and then someone comes seeing them Thursday night or something, so. We live, um, about seven minutes away, you know, from our house, so we're gonna be there often, we're gonna act as our own agents. Um, we're not gonna rent the place when we're, um, not around, not in town. You know, we want to maintain the character, the historical, you know, value of the house. Um, we've gotten to know the neighbors a little bit, um, Ms. Yaps lives next door, she's on board, um. She said, she was gonna write us a letter, but she said she doesn't use the computer, so.
She's to the left of your house, correct?
To the left of the beautiful gardens, yes, she's to the left. And then, you know, we, we also recently met, um, Courtney and Mike down the street, who own the yoga studio, and I have sort of a late letter from Courtney as well that I didn't include, uh, in the packet. Um, so we're, we're thinking our, the market will be families, you know, grandma comes into town, you know, to visit, or aunts, uncles, families, families with kids. Um, vacations, uh, potentially overflow from you of them, you know, football weekends, or, you know, folks looking for a place to stay. These are just some, um, facts, some quick facts about vacation rentals, um, just some references that we've had. We've got multiple pets that we travel with sometimes, so just, you know, we try to, we make sure we respect the houses, and we're, wanna make sure that we take very good care of this house. We also have say so over who rents the house, um, along with the different sites, so we wanna make sure that we have folks that know they're gonna take care of the house, respect the neighborhood. Um, and then just again, talking about the vacation rental experience, we wanna make it a personalized experience, we want folks to experience, you know, it's, it's a cool old house inside. You know, the majority of it, I think, has stayed the same from what we can tell, it has a lot of character, Dexter's great. Um, you know, we, lots of, it's growing, as you know, we can see by the, the previous votes. Um, and then again, it's just our goal, just to sort of, in, you know. Be a spot for people to come, enjoy Dexter, you know, you have the proximity to Ann Arbor. Um, you know, we just think it's a great opportunity for ourselves and for the city of Dexter, and it's a great, um, resource for us because the eighteen fifties house, um, required work a lot, so, and again, we have no plans to change the exterior or the look of it. But just, you know, it's, it's a lot of maintenance on the wood, and, you know, the carriage, since it's there, the, the porch, um, I've, I've been working on the lot.
Hey. I'll wave next time I walk by. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, so now at this time, we'll go into, we may call you back up for additional questions, but, um. At this time, we're gonna have a staff, uh, present to you, okay, Jenna?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Um, so the property is zoned C B D. Um, and vacation rentals are permitted there, uh, with a special land use approval. Um, recommendation from the planning commission and then approval from city council. Um, the property has, is a one and a half story, um, about thirteen hundred square foot house. Uh, one bedroom, one bathroom, there's two onsite parking spaces, um, where one is required by the zoning ordinance. The owners reside approximately. The owners reside approximately seven miles, um, from the property, so they're well within the a hundred mile, uh, requirement that's, that's laid out in the, in the ordinance. Um, also in review of the ordinance, the request is compatible with master plan. Um, as required in section eight of the, um, special land use standards. Um, a couple of reasons that, that staff has, uh, this opinion is because it, um. It, it preserves the small-town character of the city, especially in downtown, drives economic development. Um, and, uh, adds to additional community and compact development-based goals. Uh, the vacation rental meets zoning standards, um. And in terms also of meeting the CBD district intent, um, to expand social and environmental diversity of the downtown, to improve its economic vitality. Um, and, uh, you, by using compact development. Also meets the zoning standards in section fourteen use standards, because it's compatible with adjacent land uses. It won't impact the overall environment, in staff's opinion, or, um, public facilities. It's not expected to impact traffic, um, or pa- public safety and welfare, especially due to, as, um, the applicant just showed, uh, their house rules, including no parties. Um, additionally, the application demonstrates the understanding of the city's, um, permitting and renewal, um. Regulations, um, in terms of having the local agent, um, be around, um. As well as the size, the bathroom, and other requirements. So in summary, um, the proposed vacation rental housing, um, in staff's opinion. Is, uh, compliant with the special land use standards and, uh, the require, other requirements of the zoning.
Hey, thank you. No, I don't think we have a Marcus presentation on this, do we? I don't think we need one. No offense, but I don't think we need to get on this one. Um. Okay. Okay, well, perfect. Hopefully you're fine. Um, okay, so with that, that was our brief staff presentation. Thank you, and then, so at this time. Uh, nine twelve, we're going to open up the public hearing. For anybody that would like to speak on this item, please step forward and state your name and address. And I'm no one online.
And as, as Jenna mentioned, the process is. That, um, um. At the public hearing, planning commission reviews the application in accordance with the sec- with section eight oh three standards for special use. And section fourteen seventeen vacation rental housing prior to taking action.
Perfect. Thank you. And with that, we'll close the pub, well, yep. Seeing no one else, all right, we'll close the public hearing at nine thirteen. So at this time, uh, planning commission. Is in discussion, so we have. A motion. Uh, it looks like, uh. Page five?
Page five.
Yes, page five. Oh, that's right, because it was a separate.
This is your supplement.
So, um. All right, so I guess with that, do we have a motion?
Based on the information presented by the applicants and staff, and following a public hearing, which the planning commission conducted on July one, twenty twenty-four. Planning Commission fines P S L U two four dash zero 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 one special land use request. For vacation rental housing located at three one four one Baker Road. Meets the requirements set forth in article eight of the zoning ordinance and section fourteen point one seven vacation rental housing standards. And further recommends approval to city council, subject to the following conditions. One, applicant shall obtain a zoning compliance permit in accordance with section two two point oh four of the zoning ordinance. And two, staff reviewed dated July first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, move Cardi, is there support?
Support.
Support Healy? Uh. Discussion?
I've got a curiosity question.
Yes.
Sort of.
Just for the applicant, or?
Yeah, but, yeah, to the applicant, but also to staff here. Are there any other rental vacation rental places in Dexter?
Mm-hmm.
Are there?
Yeah, we have.
Um, we've approved.
Two.
There's one other vacation rental that's on Huron Street. Um, Mr. Neil came in. Three years ago now, he set the bar, which is why the applicant. It was able to provide you with, with a very complete and comprehensive application.
Good.
Yeah, that's the only other vacation rental.
Okay, just one other, okay. Yes, Mr. Corbin?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
We have staff and then the applicant. What's a large event?
In relation to how.
Large unauthorized events and large gatherings.
Yeah.
Not allowed. What is that?
In the.
What's the enforcement look like?
Hold on, hold on. I need context for where that's at. Is it in the?
It's, in your report, it says house rules, no smoking, unauthorized events, large gatherings are not allowed.
So.
Maximal of six overnight.
Uh, in relation to what the applicant is proposing, a large gathering would be any. They're restricting. Um. Who's going to stay on site? To the, to be. Let me think of the word that I'm trying to get. A large gathering is anything more than the number of people that are reserved for that. Night.
So I've had the occasion to use a vacation rental. Have a family of six. Couple of my kids have significant others.
Mm-hmm.
They bring them. And we look like a large gathering, and I would hate.
So. I know what you're saying, because we've done the same thing. What the, um. The host does is you're allowed to bring whomever you list when you make your reservation. And if you have any more, you get that approved by that. Host. Um, I've stayed in some places where you can have only as many people as what their occupancy says.
So enforcement's on the host, then?
Enforcement's on the host, except that if we get a complaint that there's been a. Large gathering, um. Then we would follow up with it that way.
Well, and they're also, they have to renew their zoning every year.
Correct.
So that's, that's really the enforcement mechanism, Tom, I think. Is, is that, if, if the city's getting all kinds of complaints, because you're ultimately allowed, these are enforceable, and I don't know that we necessarily need to enforce it if one person brings an extra. But I, I understand your point. We don't want tailgating going on, which is probably like an Ann Arbor remnant in this thing, but it's so. Point, but exactly, the next year, if there's issues with this, Michelle doesn't renew their zoning compliance permit. Because it's not compliance with our standards.
Would it be analogous to? If one of our businesses that has outdoor.
Yes.
Seating.
Yep.
Violated some of the outdoor seating rules, and we would then, okay.
Yep, it's the same.
Kind of what I thought of.
Exactly, they have to come back in for that certification, and if there's no issues, then.
Sorry, I was trying to get to.
Yep, no, that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure there was, uh, mechanism for that, and. Uh, we understood what large events are, and then my follow-up question is, I think I heard you say pets were allowed, and is the yard fenced? I couldn't tell. So. Do you have a rule that pets need to be on a leash?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I, I just want to commend you on your little presentation packet. We kind of skipped through it, but I, I appreciate this. It shows that you guys have thought through. Thought through everything, and, and again, some of this, while not directly relevant to our petition in front of us, shows that. Your thought process, I mean, right, the other houses that you're upkeeping, things like that, um. Because that is important to us, right? We're looking for this character of. Of it, and, and again, we can only control so much here as a body, but, but i- and it helps to have a, an owner that. Truly does their homework and tries to address a lot, probably working with staff as well, so. In the history part of it, cool, so, I mean, again, that you're trying to honor that little bit, that shows a little bit of intent that you're not gonna let this house go to. Go to hell, or remove the front porch.
Yeah.
So. Perfect, okay, um, thank you. Uh, any other? Question or anything?
It was a really nice presentation. It was a nice job. Thank you for the thoroughness.
Yeah, really helped, I mean, it eliminates our discussion mostly. All right, so with that, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Albert?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Over?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Paulski?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, pre-ran citizen particip- wait, yes, pre-ran citizen participation. We have none tonight. Uh, reports of officers, chairman report, nah, I don't think I have anything to report. Uh, planning commissioners, anything?
Z B A.
Oh, yeah, Z B A action. Mr. Hill's our Z B A rep.
And the Z B A approved the variance. That the, um, senior center was requesting. For, for not having, they, they didn't want to have a front door. And so, and. Just, and.
Okay.
The variance was approved.
Okay. Thank you. That was the only item, I assume?
It was the only one.
Yeah, it's only one in like the past six months or something, right? Or longer, okay, well, I guess that's good. Our zoning ordinance is that great. Um. Okay, uh, that was the committee report. From the Z B A, uh, anything from council? While that you can remember, that's.
Uh, I'll just say, I hope you all enjoyed the bicentennial as much as I did, and.
Oh, yeah.
What it brought to town. Other than that, I'm gonna keep it short. If you have any questions for me, go ahead and ask them, or. What, other than that, no report?
Yep, that's fine. Um, we can do that, uh. Any questions for a while?
No, the bicycle time was great.
I, I agree. No, no. And it went off.
Yeah.
So wonderfully, I, I can believe downtown.
I know.
As crammed as it was, and.
And the whole time, too. I mean, it was.
Yeah.
Do it every year.
Awesome. Wow, we'll see, um.
I don't know what Cheryl would say about that.
So.
Love that first one.
I know.
Four comments on the first one.
Did you get that?
Yeah, I did.
And it was in their picture of the last presentation, too. The old one.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. That's true. We'll have to wait another hundred years, maybe. Okay. All right, yes, uh. Okay, and did we cover, wait, really quickly, Michelle, oh, actually, we're probably, we're getting your community development report, but about the meeting we had regarding the Broad Street, because I was gonna mention that in my chairman report, but I, okay, all right, take. Yes.
With my review, um, it will be in my report to the council as well. Into D D A will meet this, uh, this month. Uh, the D D A has asked to, um, pull a total board from their consultant, it's been their strategic plan. Um, to hold the second thirty forty-five Broad Street workshop, um, um. Our amendment for our motion plan, only have one meeting. Um, and the D D A picked up the manual to say we need to have a second one. Um, so that we've got a much clearer picture from the community as to what should be redeveloped, you know, how that should be redeveloped. Um, um, and D D A is especially, um. Uh, sensitive to that right now, because if you have a lot of interest from the developer, and the developer wants to do a redevelopment agreement, but would also be willing to do a special purchase agreement. And D D A really wants to make sure before they. Uh, do either, that they have a clear understanding of the direction of this.
So I think, thank you, and I, I just wanted to say, too, that's one thing I was gonna mention in the chairman report, is that I think for the next meeting, if we can. Spread the word as much as possible to everybody we have in it, because I think that the input from that meeting, it. It tended. It tended to be a little bit skewed, I think, so I, I think that a wider. Uh, representation of, of city residents, if we can all urge all of our, and, and this is all our land based, or this is our land at that thing, so I really want to get the feedback out there for other. City residents to help contribute to this process, because I think as, as, uh, Michelle also alluded to, I, I felt that it was a little bit skewed, given upon the, the. The input that we got from, from the groups, it was still very valuable, but. I also feel that we could ex- expand upon that, so. Yeah. Um, yes, Mr. Hill?
I'm curious to know how valuable it was. It was interrupting.
That's right, you have your.
And, um. But when twenty to twenty-five percent of the people there were from Jeffords, and they didn't want to see anything, absolutely, they wanted that to be a park. Ridiculous.
From one fifty Jeffords is what.
Yeah.
Cheryl is referring to the.
Yes.
Project.
Um. So. You summarized everything here, and there are no real conclusions, because there could, no conclusions could be made.
No.
So I was. It was interesting, but I was a little disappointed in how it went, because an awful lot of discussion, for instance, at our table is. It can't be a park. It just can't be. It's gotta have something, so how do you deal with that? So, anyway.
Yeah, check, yeah, I mean, that was correct. Uh, the, the ground will, ground, for those that weren't in attendance, the ground ru- rule was established from the very beginning in the handouts that. It's not a, it, this, the intent of this is not to be a park. It was purchased by the D D A for use as a development. It. The D D A, our public money is invested into the site. Mr. Corbin?
I did have a conclusion as I walked the meeting, and that was that we weren't going to get a consensus on it.
Yes. I, I, I think that's clear, and I, and I, I think it's. Valuable, and essentially, we do these processes, but again, I, ultimately, it's gonna come down, well, depending which way they go, as a board like us, and ultimately city council. Um, but we all have the opportunity, it sounds like, for another public meeting, so let's get the word out there as much as we can. All right, uh, citizens wishing to address the commission? Are you getting up to, oh, perfect, all right. Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hello, Joseph Mafaro, three two one four Boulder Court. Um. Uh, with respect to the public hearing tonight. Um, the ordinance is pretty clear. It says an amendment to the ordinance can be initiated in a number of different ways. One of those is from city council. It says when there is an amendment initiated. A public hearing will be scheduled before the planning commission, not by the planning commission, not requested by the planning commission, it says it will be scheduled before the planning commission. And then it says, the report of the planning commission is supposed to be passed along to the city council after it's held. And there's a lot of good comments that should be part of the report that would go back. But it was properly initiated by the council, which we can do. And it was passed down, a public hearing was scheduled, it was noticed. And you should have. Um. I would, would have liked to have given you some of the feedback and some of the, um. Some of the things that I've heard from members of the public about this particular topic and why this was requested. Um, there's, I, I don't know how many of you are familiar with it, or have been to the Dexter Forum, that's twice a month at the Wellness Center. Um, there's a lot of discussion, there's been a lot of discussion about the senior center for about the last eighteen, twenty-four months, as this process has started and progressed, and the funding has been, uh. Gotten, and, uh. The, in the building became available, there was a lot of that kind of stuff. Um. About a month, month and a half ago, um, members of the school were there. Dick Lundey was there. Dick Lundey said in the meeting, he said. All the city council's got to do is waive that requirement. They can do whatever they want to do. And at the time, I challenged him on that, and I said, no, we cannot. We are the elected representatives of the city, and we are elected to enforce the laws, not waive. That's not what we do. And we did tell him at the time, you can go to the Z B A. There's some consternation about going to the Z B A, whether it would get approved or not, that kind of stuff. Somebody else said, this is stupid. This is a stupid law. It's a stupid rule. Why do we have this? And I said, we have this because the planning commission put in a lot of time and a lot of effort to come together with a comprehensive plan for the Baker Road. Corridor, whatever you want to call it, and. It's not stupid. It was a process that we went through. There was public hearings, public input, there was a lot of discussion, and a lot of effort that went into that. And if there's something that we want to consider for a change, there's a process to do that. And I said, we will look at that. We will look at that process to change. So. Now I'm in the unenviable position of having been called stupid at a meeting with the Dexter Forum, and then having feedback here tonight that were. Similar comments. Um, it's frustrating. I'm trying hard to defend you all in the public, that the work that you do is valuable and contributes to the city, and contributes to what we have, and makes the city better. And still trying to respond to the community when they come up with these things, and. I don't disagree with the comment that this may be the only building that this ever applies to, but. The feedback that we heard was, we should have some flexibility on some of these things, to be able to look at them, and I, I can give you another example, is park, parking. And, you know, there's an allowance that says, planning commission can go through and can adjust the parking. Hundred percent, should be able to adjust the parking. We, we have rules, and we use them as guidelines as we should. Because of things like impervious surface or surrounding areas that have parking, there's a lot of variables that go into that, and you should be able to have that. We should be able to adjust those type of things. And I agree that the plan that we have for Baker Road is a good one, but. We have a process to go through and do these things. You, the planning commission followed that process in order to put this ordinance in place. You, the planning commission followed that process in order to put this ordinance in place. We're asking for you to follow the process in order to evaluate whether or not there might be some changes that happen to that. And I understand completely if the feedback is you don't agree with that. That's good feedback. That's feedback that we should get. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the commission? See, nobody? All right, all business done. Moving right along to the fire station. So consideration of eighty-one forty Main Street Fire Station. Beth or Megan? Yep, Megan, okay. Megan Marcus, Michelle? That's good, Megan Marcus, Michelle.
Right. Good evening. For you is the first review of combined site plan for a fire station, county subs sheriff substation applicants proposing to construct a two-story. Twelve thousand nine hundred thirteen square foot building on a about fifty thousand nine hundred square foot. Portion of a larger parcel at eight eighty-one forty Main Street on the northwest corner of Alpine and Main Street. Currently, the portion of the site proposed for redevelopment is a fire station and county substation. And the remainder of the site will continue as a public park. They're proposing to remove the existing to demolish the existing building, remove all structures, driveways, peak areas and sidewalk areas to be redeveloped. A portion of the port of the gravel parking area will be removed. The remainder will be regraded and topped. The driveway accessing Main Street is proposed to be widened. The proposed that this site is really crazy in terms of elevation. There's a thirty. Foot drop of one portion to another. You look at the topography. So the proposed building is going to be at approximately the same finished floor elevation as the current building. But it's going to be surrounded north and west by three retaining walls. So I'm sure that when you looked at the plans that you saw that. And so that's going to drive a lot of the deviations that. You're going to be able, you're going to have to look at tonight. There'll be a public entrance on Alpine, so the. Public coming in will come up Alpine. That structure has. A handicapped access ramp, because that's attached to the building. It functions as part of the building in terms of setbacks, so that. A little that it's a little wonky. Also, the changes in the topography. Is that you have on Alpine, you have a two-story building. And then really, when you get on Main Street, you have a one-story building where you have a two-story behind it. So this is a complicated site that's. You need to think in three dimensions. And also to add, there's and there also are three employee entrances either facing Alpine. Or the interior of the Main Street driveway area. Then the parcel is split zone. So the area that's proposed for redevelopment is central business district. And the rest of it is public facilities. So wherever the fire station is now. That's central business district and it's also planned for downtown. Over the park is that is zone public facilities and planned for, I think, open space. So. Again, we're, it's a little, it's a little complicated. But it's basically surrounded by the downtown, except for across the Mill Creek, that is the that's. Village Commercial, and that is where the Pella buildings are proposed. So now that we're grounded in the. Ups and downs of the site. There, if you'll look on page one hundred and five, we've listed the different. Requirements for area width, height and setbacks, and there are a number of deviations needed. The minimum front set pack from Alpine Street, again, that's due to the. The handicap ramp being. Attached, but really then if you look at the building itself and not the ramp, that would meet that front yard setback. That that minimum. The minimum crunch frontage buildout, a deviation is needed on both on Alpine Street and Main Street because of. They don't meet the minimum of fifty percent for institutional building. A lot of that has to do with the type of building and also how it sits on the site. And then there's a minimum ground for height of fourteen feet. There are thirteen feet four inches. Deviations, sometimes there are actually in the plans, there were two or three of that. And. So that. There could be various variations of those. We've listed that you can grant setback deviations from the deviations that I cited. When the following found that it does not adversely impact public health, safety and welfare, it's compatible with adjacent uses. Deviation is compatible with a master plan and course of goals and objectives. Including firstly, the first impact, impacts and services. The deviation would be compliant as well, a double one of the standards. The deviation not adversely impact offsite or on on site crossing up the features and as proposed, the building needs the dimensional zone. Standards of the zoning ordinance. In terms of the building design. This is in the central business district and it has two separate design standards that needs to be. It meets all the ones for. It it's generally most of them, except that the second floor transparency in Main Street elevation is ten percent, and that's less than the required twenty percent. Also, it's noncompliant, the standards in section eleven eleven in terms of fifty percent transparency of the first floor. For institutional building, didn't count on Main Street, the. Last that's in the garage doors, but we think that we did. There's also an allowance for alternatives in terms of wall design or coming art. Feeling that Alpine Street can meet that. Would qualify for that if they, we just got a little more information. The building elevation would need to have changes in plain not less than three inches. We didn't have that on the elevations that we could see or a screen, a system of horizontal or vertical reveals not less than one inch. Or green screen or plan or wall. There seems to be changes, but the dimensions were incited. Terms of natural features, as I said, the site has significant topography. There is a standard trees between Alpine Street and the existing parking lot, which for removal, if you think about where the. Visualize that you're walking down Alpine, you're exiting the farmer's market, there's a fence there and there's lots of trees. And then you can. You get to the corner and you can see the fire station, that those that standing trees that there is proposed to be removed. And then for existing trees just in the north of the parking lot proposed to remain. In terms of landscaping, no street trees have been provided. And so waiver would be needed. The coordinates required is a thirty foot base with wall with trucks and landscaping on the street, a commercial ornamental aluminum fence is. And so waiver is needed for that. Also, the landscape plan with seven treats and good to fair condition proposed for removal subject. Subject to street tree tree replacement standards. The basic plan that the applicant provided cited the section as exemptions for tree requirements, which states the tree trimming and removal necessary. To the operation of essential public service, essential services of municipal or other other mental department or agency. A new utility franchise to operate in the city. While that tree removal is proposed for the construction of the fire station, we've recommended that the replacement trees that. That replacement trees are considered in the park portion. Also, you have requirements about genus and species. They are requiring a lot of the, if you look at the. The landscaping that's proposed for the retaining walls are, you'll see that they're all single species kind of looping through. We've cited those as over those percentages. Also looking for the that there's details, this is a combined site plan. So it's all, everything for preliminary and final. It do not have details on tree protection on there, which are required for final. So those need to be there. Also, we were confused about the rain garden. It's shown on. Essentially the engineering sheets, but it's not shown on the landscape plan, so they need to coordinate on that. In terms of driveways and access, we've decided that the the Main Street is proposed to be slightly widened. Also, in terms of sidewalks, as we had mentioned with the previous case, there in the central business district, a seven foot wide. There's requirements that there is a ten to twenty foot wide. Area with a dedicated walkway of at least five feet in the planning and furniture area. And that isn't met, and so it doesn't make those meet those design standards. Because it doesn't meet those design standards, this would be a candidate for variance, and it might be, again, because of the topography and the unusual nature of the corner. That might be someplace that that would be something, but that would need either to revise that sidewalk or have a variance granted. In terms of parking, they're exempt from the minimum parking requirement. And then again. In terms of required a waiver for the maximum, and the last one, we should probably have a waiver for the maximum parking here. Loading and storage, technically a storage. Two loading spaces are required, none are proposed, but that's something the planning commission could waive. And due to the nature of the fire station, we find that that waiver would be appropriate. In terms of lighting, the site plan contains a photometric plan, but it doesn't meet the provisions of section thirty-three eleven. And we've listed the manner in which it does not, including lighting levels, building mounted lighting and lighting details. In terms of mechanical equipment and utilities, they have been screened. There's a D T switch cabinet. And then the proposed generator transformer pad. Also, in terms of the dumpster and waste receptacles. No dumpster waste receptacle is shown on the site that we could discern, so they need to either need to. Tell the planning commission how they would have proper screening or detail how the waste is going to be handled without a dumpster. Signs would be allowed under different permits, and they were shown on the building as well. We've. Have a list of seven things that we felt that should be. Information provided to the planning commission for the combined site plan. But we wanted to note that if it went forward as presented, there were a number of deviations. That are listed in the page one hundred ninety-three and one hundred ninety-four of your packet. And then we also have listings of conditions if you check. Recommend approval.
Thank you, thank you.
Evening, Ian. I guess I'm Mero H M. So this. From a point of clarity. Everybody understands, obviously, we function as a city engineer. O H M does have a site design team that is separate from our discipline hearing. Division. Were. Asked by the city early on to. Be involved in in the site design this project. We worked hard to set to make sure that there. Wouldn't be any conflict there as far as the city following its own process. We all know how important that is to follow the rules that. Make everybody else else foul. So you may may have noticed that on the block there are drawings, but again, sort of a separate department. And it followed the typical planning process that we would do for any other project. We didn't have a lot of comments. I think we had twelve maybe total between preliminary and final. They're in the letter. A lot of them are housekeeping. Things that you've probably seen before in other projects, certificate of outlook for the stormwater. We agreed with. There were some discrepancies between the landscape plan and utility plan, which includes the rain garden that needs to be addressed. Or truck turning templates. Had the same trash pickup question. And that would be handled. And. The the final level of detail on the. Stormwater calculations. A good portion of the site passed or proposed building and painting walls are. It's in the existing floodplain. So there's really no value in trying to tame on this site, because in a design event, it's going to be underwater anyways. Water quality, of course, is important, so there are. Components of the design that account for that mechanical and treatment and the whole rain garden. To treat that first flush drain before it gets out to the creek. We had. We did review the plan with D P W, which I know they've been part of the design meetings as well. There were a couple of minor details related to the location of the water valves for the fire and the domestic. Service for the building. Standing tray sewer service is proposed to utilize existing sewer leak, because. City recently spent a fair amount of money repairing that line, so we're going to use that to the extent possible. And that one to beat all the way out to the main under Alpine. And then our last couple of comments with this related to some notes on the plan to refine. A process and the restoration methods.
Thank you. Okay, Michelle, I guess we have fire. Do we want a quick fire review? You want to do it, or I guess we still have them on the line if they want?
I believe that. Marcus and and. Megan summed up everything.
Okay, on the, do they have any questions about?
Just summarized the. Into the motion as well as.
Okay.
Conditions, should you be so inclined to move this forward?
Okay, so that is covered. Okay, all right, we can do that. Yes, sir. Thank you for your patience. Please give me your name again as well.
Good evening. I'm David Gasson with Partners in Architecture on behalf of the city for the new fire station. And great to be here with you tonight and just to get a little bit of content, more to what Megan mentioned in terms of the project as a description. It's gone through many iterations to get to the. Proposed result that we have for you. And the retaining walls that she mentioned were necessitated by the total removal of the building. If you're not really familiar, and I assume that. It's some of you or maybe somebody in the audience that doesn't know completely what that building is, and it's got a lower level basement. We're also going to walk out to the park that is no longer going to be part of the project, and we're basically going to build up. A building pad to the level with earth. Improved soils to the level that mainstream, so it'll have retaining walls to help support the new building pad. That was the reason. I thought maybe that would help understand why, why are we adding retaining walls? And the building is roughly twelve or twelve nine, almost thirteen thousand square feet, replacing a building that's about. Ten thousand square feet, and the initiation of it is that. Woefully inadequate in terms of functionality, a lot of the health and safety concerns of firefighters as well. In addition to that, the building itself kind of presents a safety issue relative to, you know, how the public interacts with it. We can. Acknowledge that with our solution in terms of the. Fire administration services being part of Alpine Street and the fire suppression portion of the building, two separate functions within the fire station. Now, fire stations have both. That would be on the Main Street level, so it would be fire suppression, fire administration services on Alpine Street. And to go over a couple of the items that were in the fore, the discrepancies, I just want to kind of touch on a couple to add a little more detail. The building. Frontage element that was mentioned, so just to add a little bit more, as mentioned, that it was topography was one. Maybe more than that is the. Functionality of how a fire station really functions, the whole front of that building needs to be open. From the new ring of leaving the building with a fire truck, getting back to the fire station with a fire truck. So that really kind of negates a good portion of frontage for development. The other, and that's kind of the south side. The north side, there's a fair part. Forty-five plus feet that's really respected for the parking for the park. Just going to separate from the function of fire state. So there's a fair part of developing along that. Alpine Street, that is really not possible because of those two things. Likewise, across the east-west direction. There's a lot of topography there. That's really one of the greatest topographies. It's probably a thirty foot. A change from Alpine down to the park level that we're dealing with. I mean, it's compounded in that it's just not one direction. It doesn't go north, south, or just east-west. It's all of those are changing. And on the west side, the other challenge there to frontage development or build out. Is the drive that goes down to the parking for the park, which we're rebuilding as part of this project, and it goes up to the creek. So again, there's a. Fair amount of distance and building frontage that's really not. Possible for build us, where we do fall short in those percentages. Another item mentioned there was the floor to floor. Another item mentioned there was the floor-to-floor desire to be according ordinance states fourteen feet. Knowing that, we tried to manipulate as we could the changes from Main Street and as the building sits right now, we've raised that floor a little about four inches, so to mitigate some of the drainage issues out in front of the building. But really to push the building up or higher towards Alpine Street for access to less barrier-free ramping from Alpine sidewalk, the building. And so the less we can raise it, the less the ramp we'd have to navigate to get from sidewalk to the building if you're having some ambulatory challenges in life. So that was the reasoning going from fourteen to thirteen four, just a little bit of a difference there. Transparency was another item in terms of percentages. We did update, and as Megan mentioned, there was maybe some misunderstanding of how to calculate or what was appropriate to calculate. So the glass in the doors for the base weren't in their original number, so they've been updated and submitted or recently submitted. So I know that that information maybe hasn't been even gone through, certainly not distributed yet, but that has gone up to thirty-eight percent. There's another catch to that I want to point out is that the Alpine Street or the second floor of Main Street is also deficient. The reason is, if you're looking at the elevation, big brow above the apparatus bay doors is a sizable amount of masonry. All of that was used to calculate the ratio of percentage of transparency for the second floor. So we took that out of that calculation because it really wasn't appropriate to be second floor, because it's all one story on the apparatus bay. But it does surpass the second floor line of the Alpine Street that we followed there. So we used that, we shook our way from the second floor calculation, but we applied it to the first floor calculation. The first floor would have been way more than the fifty percent. We added that to that calculation, so we're at thirty percent there. We did exceed the requirement for second floor, but now at twenty-four percent. As far as alternative for permanent art, just to clarify, I know that maybe the detail wasn't shown by that cross-section detail. But the insulation and plane, the changes in plane and mat, you know, to qualify for that alternative. You have a two-minute projecting cornice or corbling block at the cornice. We also have a one-inch projection that sells and also one-inch offset on panels. And I could draw your attention to maybe the the main street elevation. And you can see above the apparatus bay doors, there's some coloration difference in two different masonry types. And there's a shadow line where those changes occur, that would indicate the offset in that plane. And that same articulation happens on the office windows as well as the Alpine Street elevation. So that alternative is what we did to accomplish the percentage requirements. The other thing I wanted to mention, trees, there are nothing right now. Seven really presents a lot of concerns for the function of a fire station. Sidelines for protections as well as those that are higher up on the ground on the apparatus, leaving the site, being able to see passerbyers on the sidewalk. So they were purposely left off. They weren't left off because we didn't know the farms, but the putting there does cause a safety issue for use, use of that front apron. The other tree deficiency noted was on Alpine Street. We show four where five is required. If you look at the plans, I think there appropriately space were provided there. But I'll go back to my first comment regarding building frontage. A lot of the frontage up to the north is really kind of where the farmer's market is and that steep slope and it's some of where that existing tree canopy is going to be removed, but only minimally, only to the extent required for those contain walls. As much as possible will remain. But there isn't really a lot of planting opportunity, just like there wasn't enough building opportunity because of that one slope. And it really is kind of, it's more of a park, parking, park front is there, there's a landscaping. But if we needed to, certainly planting those in park could be an acceptable way for us to handle that requirement. The other thing was mentioned was the fence or it's a decorative, it looks like a wrought iron fence, it's really a little bit more modern product that it looks like an old world wrought iron fence, and that's really what's there now along Alpine Street. That's the same fence. That's currently there. It's the backstop along the farm market. It's along the edge of Alpine Street, really up to the front, up to Main Street. And the proposal is is indicated also to use that same type of fence and reuse some of the existing as well. And where it really comes into question is right along Main Street where if you've been there anytime, you'd notice that the parking level is significantly lower than the sidewalk level, which is basically paralleling Main Street. And that offset is being handled by a new masonry wall, which is going to be a retained wall. It's a guard against that elevation shape from the sidewalk down to the parking, which is currently there. We're putting a proposed wrought iron fence, so to speak, similar to what's there now. Hopefully that's something that was mentioned for variance, so if that's the course we need to take, certainly we'll give you that. Kind of couples with the other element that was mentioned, which is requirement for a ten to twenty-foot sidewalk, five feet of a beginning of walking or designated walking path. That kind of falls into, as Megan mentioned, you know, the challenge of having appropriate paved area for maneuvering an apparatus relative to where the building is and the street is, so that portion that's walkable or plantable is basically what's there now. It's roughly ten feet from the curb line to the proposed fence, so seven of that ten will be a walkway, three of that will be a just to note that to take as much consideration for that front, frontage as possible. We moved the new building back about six feet, so we're dealing with the need for the apron, not just by squeezing the sidewalk, but also by moving the building in a way that would likely increase the maneuverability and also would enhance the safety of that front of the building. Wasn't mentioned, but on this note here, this is a safety item. On both sides of the apron, on the sidewalk, we're introducing something that's not there now, which is a is actually an alerting signage, so it will indicate to someone that's walking by with visual, not just a sign, but illumination. That potential hazard could be ahead. Number four for me was variance in planting. It was mentioned about the single, single type of planting. You know, the idea is to get as much as possible on the site, and I think we did a great deal of that. However, we did fall short, so there's a deficiency in some of it, but there's a rationale to it. We introduced the retaining walls, and basically what that is, is it's going to be a tier of three levels, one at the building line. And then five feet down, then five feet down, and five feet more to the park level. And each of those five-foot steps, there's about a five-foot area of planting. So it's not going to be easily maintained or not easy to get to to maintain, so we looked at a simple vegetation that would add some, you know, variation in colors from here, well, one of them will change from red to a blue and seasonal change, and ones of juniper, so it's kind of simple along the curve of those retaining walls. But there is a variety, and what we're trying to do again is keep it simple for maintenance. And if a waiver was needed for that, so we would ask, you consider that. Rain garden was mentioned that by Marcus as well, that it wasn't coordinated or indicated on the landscape plan. And that is correct based on what you received. We updated that and coordinated other drawings to indicate that there is a rain garden. And then rain garden area, there's parking that goes right up to it, and then existing park lines between the park, whether it's the paved area or the stone area will be maintained as the edge of the park. And there's some existing boulders there, and now they'll just be repositioned as a bumper garden, as is mentioned in some of the report requirements. To provide a top of bumper protection, whether it be a concrete or boulder, so we're dealing with that through the boulder. It was also mentioned that we need to provide calculation for structure for the retaining walls, and that will be forthcoming. And the parking at the rain garden, which I just mentioned, was the bumpers will be by boulders. And the plan has been revised to show that loading space, the two spaces we mentioned is being required, the nature of the fire station, there isn't a lot of need for that, however, there is occasion for it. The parking on Alpine, across Alpine, there's a indent parking area that's been now dedicated for loading, unloading, not just for fire, but for other merchant activity in that area. So that is currently on the plan. Mechanical, a utility type screening, whether it be masonry wall or vegetation, that's been accommodated on the landscape plan for the elements that are going to be currently there and going to be added in that same area where all utility and communication boxes are. That will be vegetated for screening, and then down at the park level, we're putting the generator and the transformers. That has landscaping as well as a masonry screen wall, which is currently on the plans as well. It was noted that signage is a part of this, although it's indicated on the plans, the signage obviously will follow, so hopefully permit. That kind of responded to some of the questions in the report, scanning my notes from Marcus. Megan here, I'm missing anything else. Protection, that'll be so noted on the revised, I don't know, some middle for the landscape coordination, as I said, was already done. Loading, trash, that was mentioned as well. Then the way the fire station or department deals with that currently is that it's all internal. They maintain their own tracks inside the building and rolling carts and then put it out at pickup time. So there is no need or desire to have a trash enclosure dumpster. It just would be something that wouldn't be utilized to the extent dumpsters are provided for. Then lighting, finally, the lighting. I hope you maxed you'd have now. Obviously, there were some deficiencies or exceeded allowable limits. An updated plan has been submitted with the wall lights, it's basically the Doosanax opening over the openings to the apparatus bay. And then there's also some wedge lighting that are code requirements, exit doors with the three man doors that were noted on Main Street level. There's the wall sponsors that are on Alpine Street, so all except one portion on Alpine Street, one light right at the entry exceeds the point three requirement or limitation. And I think that could be handled with an adjustment or elimination of light, but we feel it is right at the entry if that occurs, and we feel that that's an appropriate place to have lighting. It's just matter of looking at a different way to give it lighting, whether it's shielded or a different fixture or something like that. So those fixture types have also been included in the package you have now, and they just weren't appropriately calculated on the I think that covers, is there anything I missed that might have been brought up?
Yeah, we'll, we'll remind you if there is.
Certainly.
If there's outstanding questions, we'll, we'll definitely call you back up. All right, thank you. Yes.
One thing that I'd like to take to highlight in staff review is there is going to be a line division because the park is parked and the front, where the fire station is, is central business district. The other thing in order to accommodate the building of this new fire station, city council will be vacating a portion of the ninety-nine foot wide road right deploy for Alpine. It will remain, if I remember correctly, sixty-six foot. Sixty-six feet wide, we still have the parking or voting on but those will become as part of.
Okay, thank you. All right, so as a planning commission, we have again, a lot to unpack here. Page one forty-five, we have a motion. There's a motion to move it forward. We could also move to postpone. And yeah, so I guess we'll leave it at that. If somebody's ready to make a motion, while somebody's thinking about that, Michelle, can I ask a over-the-top question, kind of like an overview? Did, did we ever consider rezoning this to public facilities since it's, was that even discussed or no? If it's not, it's not. I just was.
I'm trying to remember how we I don't remember talking about.
I mean, I don't think we did as a committee. And again, I don't, I'm not trying to make an issue. I was just kind of curious because one of the things, again, well, hopefully somebody's thinking of a motion to make here that I'm kind of struggling with too, is this is a public facility. So I mean.
It will be identified in the financial plan of public facility. But at the time of the plan, it's the plan that
Well, right, I remember kind of that now that you, yeah, now that you're, you're absolutely correct, because we are correct, because we didn't know where that was going. So, but one other kind of clarifying question, maybe just for me, but so again, as a public facility, we, council, council could approve this with all these issues outstanding, in theory, correct? Yeah, I mean, again, not that they would, but so yes. Yes, yes, no, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to kind of make sure and yeah, maybe just for my benefit, but okay, so with that, does anybody have a motion to make? We can get in some additional discussion. One interesting start some discussion.
If I'm a chair, never makes a motion.
No, I can't. It's in the rules.
I have a question. Are we on a timeline here? Because there's two and a half pages of things that have to be addressed. And
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
However, I don't say that in answer to your question to prevent you from doing your job.
No, I think you'd never do that, but it's helpful. Allison's question also helpful.
The, the when this all started, the the expectation something anticipated with the ground would be broken in spring. And grounds have to be broken
This fall? Wow, that's a really fast timeline.
Yes. All right, here we go. Based on the information provided by the applicant staff, C W A O H M and D A F D, the planning commission finds P S P C two four dev zero zero two combined site plan for the city of Dexter Fire Station, eight one four oh Main Street, ren oh eight oh three three one four seven four oh seven meets the requirements of section two one dot oh eight and two one dot oh nine of the zoning ordinance and recommends approval for the city council, subject to the following. All waivers A through H shall be recommended to the city council. I the site plan revision shall be submitted. I J K, they each have to either submit the site plan revision or comply with the other or and L M N O P Q and R all need to be met as well.
No, that's what I got. Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Cardy. There is a motion for support.
Support.
All right, support heat lead. Discussion, yes, please.
Make sure I understood. So for I J K, they, are you making the motion that they must revise the plan or they either revise the plan, show the mixture, meet the ordinance, or they'll have to get a variant?
It's choose, it's choose your own adventure, Michelle. They can do one of the, one of the options.
That's when I want to make sure that that's what you want.
Yeah, any one of the options.
Okay.
Like one of those children's books where you say, pick one or you pick the other.
You put on a path, different path each time?
Right.
Okay, so thank you for that clarity. Now, discussion. Yes, Mr. Cooper.
So in my picture on adventure here, I had a different path I took for item F and G. A waiver, I was thinking, shall not be recommended to council for approval for landscape requirements. Permitting more than twenty-five percent of the proposed landscape via the single species and more than ten percent of a single species. I think they should be able to mix the plant species on the plan. And then G, correct me if I'm wrong here, it says you would recommend a waiver to city council be approved for a D.
you would recommend a waiver to city council be approved for a deviation in landscape requirement to permit tree removal subject to tree replacement in the park portion of the parcel. So that, that's not saying they're removing trees and not mitigating for them, or are they removing trees? And planting them in the park?
The required mitigation, but in the park. Right? Is that correct, Michelle? That's the way I read it. That's all it's okay.
And then I'm on the same path then for G, but I think we should with the species diversification.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that just because that's there for a reason. You get pests all the time that clear out single species. It, I appreciate the thought process in it, but I, I mean, that's.
Talking about a proposed friendly amendment, and I bet you Allison and I will be amenable to it.
Jet won't be. Yes, I'm suggesting a friendly amendment.
To, to have the.
To have item F.
That say shall not.
Shall be a shall not.
Okay. Okay. There's no discussion.
In that regard. Tom, I disagree. You, to me, a planting plan such as this does not want to be a helter skelter distribution of uh, multi um, plant species. I think you could go in there and be uh, use a uniform species for a portion of, and then maybe move to something else. I'm, I'm very sympathetic to this type of thing. To me, from an engineering standpoint, you see it all the time because of code requirements of putting every other tree being a different species ruins the um, continuity of, and the, of a plan. And that's kind of what I see this. So I, I disagree. Uh, as a landscape architect who had to deal with this issues many, many times. I, I disagree. Now, I do think some variation could, could accomplish the same thing I have in mind. Um, and I happen to know the landscape architect, so I know he can do that. But the plan as presented, I'm, I don't have a real problem with it.
I don't, but I mean, I think it's currently the amendment stands unless you choose to withdraw.
We're discussing, we're discussing.
Yep, exactly. So.
Wow, Karen, any thoughts?
Um, wake up. I, I've just been so unhappy with this project from the get go. So that's kind of a problem because I.
Well, what about the landscaping in particular right now?
I tend to agree with Chad. I just don't see. I, you know, I understand the principle, but I, you know, we, I think we wanted to look uh, not continuous and not too much action. Um, we're next to the park, park got a lot going on, so it's not like, oh gee, you know. No plant variation to be seen. There's plenty of it. And this is trying to shore, you know, shore up a wall and I, it has a function and I, and, and I just think, you know, I can think of examples places where this has been an option or choice and the homogeneity I think help the appearance.
Okay.
Is there a percentage that would make everybody happy?
I don't want to get down a percentage road, but, but I mean, but no, but I'm individual species. I, we're getting.
Here's what I would suggest.
Okay.
That the landscape architect, hearing these comments come back with a plan that responds to these comments to the best of his ability. I think he could come up with something that I could be happy with as long as it isn't one bush in a different kind of bush, in a different kind of bush, and a different kind of bush. You know, that sort of.
I agree with that, but we have a more, unfortunately, we don't. Well, we may have that. If, if the most, I mean, we could postpone it, have that come back, but as it stands now, we, we wouldn't see this back because it's combined. And given their timeline. So uh, we, I know Tom was first, I think, sorry, and then Karen.
So I look at this, I do respect Chad's opinion on this. Um, we do have a code that has certain percentages in it. Where they're asking for a lot of deviations. We are, we're allowing a lot of deviations with what we're talking about. And to me, I, I don't want to have this come back in other projects and the deviations we're constantly looking at. So I think that they would be able to come up with a creative, creative solution um, to solve this and meet the code without that deviation. I do uh, think there are some cases where um, the monoculture nature of some things is appropriate in the design, but I think they've integrated here and remove the deviation.
Okay, so do you, do you have something else new or otherwise I think we might just go forward with the motion?
This is fine, right?
Yes.
Okay, and there's no way to say, well.
Well.
Because we don't get to.
I mean, I'm sitting here. So yeah, this may be final here, but I can take all of these concerns to city council regardless of which way we vote on item F.
Correct.
And I will.
So when I think again, like what, what's forward now is the ship, what is the, sorry, shall not? That was the friendly amendment. So that's basically what we're discussing, discussing. And it sounds like, yeah, there's some healthy disagreement here. And I'm kind of in the middle. I respect Chad's opinion as professional, but then again, I also agree with Tom on that. So I, I don't want to make a hu- huge issue out of it. And I have confidence that the architect can, the landscape architect can make it work. So.
Close that then, instead of having it, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, so.
I don't think we, I think we, we have to either support the waiver or, or not support the waiver. We can't waiver the waiver. So I think, um, but again, so that, that's obviously an issue. And with this, I'm stru- struggling, right? There, as Tom said, there's a lot of waivers. Yes, Megan. Our staff has a has some hope. Oh, okay.
Um, so would a waiver of this, of the genus and not the species work? Because it's a monoculture of the three tiers. You were looking for a low maintenance species. You see where I'm going? Is that you could waive the ten percent species and keep the twenty five percent genus?
I know where you're going with it, but wow, I didn't think of that.
Yep, possibly.
I, I didn't know whether that would help the situation and allow some flexibility from a design standpoint or whether it's just further complicated situation.
Um, good question, and I don't have a good answer. Um. So I don't know where we can go with that, but possibly. I would, myself, I would very much like to see a response to this from the petitioner as to what can be done given the input um, that we've got tonight.
So I mean, I think the only way to do that would be postpone the item.
Yeah, and we'd be postponing everything, right?
Correct.
Well, I've got a series of things here.
Yeah, I mean, there's, so let's did you have something to add right to the conversation or no? Oh, I thought you were raising it. Well, is it quick and irrelevant to this? Okay.
Regarding the species deviations.
Yes.
We can comply. It's not like we, we didn't want to.
Right.
The design professional just thought this was the right way to go, even though he understood the kind.
Probably in the same.
It's no big deal. If we have to change, we'll change it, but we think what it is, is the right choice for the city.
Yep. No, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so, right, we have a lot to un, there's a lot here. So um, do you have additional, I mean, like?
Not relative to any specific point on here.
Well, no, then that's okay. I think we can move on to these other issues right now. I mean, we, like I said, we've.
First, we have to either adopt or not adopt Tom's friendly amendment.
But I thought we did.
I, I didn't, yeah, did we?
I thought you did. You, you proposed it and you said it was a friendly.
Yeah, yes, I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay, yeah. I didn't, I didn't think we did that on the record, so I just wanted to know.
I often forget. So, okay, I think so. Uh, yeah, now's the time, additional items, please.
Um. Let me show you something which I know everybody is totally familiar with. The last rendition that we have seen, had seen about this particular subject. That being this. Much more interesting in my view than what we've got. When I saw this plan and I'm, I'm sorry if I'm going to insult the architect here, but when I opened up this big drawing my, my heart sank, really. Much like it did after the debate the other night on TV. I was like, oh my God, this can't be happening. And.
That's Shannon.
But again, so I'm against, I I'm not the kind of guy that, that I think that um, likes to browbeat, but I've got a lot of questions. What happened to the public restrooms? That's so important.
I'm going to tell you what happened. It's the budget.
I don't give a damn about the budget.
We do though.
I know, but.
Have to.
No, you find the money in my view.
Okay, and I wish we could, but we don't have a consensus sitting at the council table that allows us to have that discussion.
My point is, you do, you, okay, we just don't build it right now. We build the budget.
We have public money.
This is a, and I'm going to argue this. This is a facility that's going to be there for the next fifty to seventy years. And do we want an ugly building because we don't have the money?
It's a lot of money that we don't have.
I don't care. We're going to get an ugly building.
I think.
Is a budget constraint?
I understand.
I mean, I understand.
It has, they have to utilize that budget within a certain period of time. And that's why this is on it. I need to get this thing moving.
You know.
And they don't miss, I don't say that because it's the right thing to do. It's just the reality of the situation that council has gotten itself into.
Well, can I just also say, Chad, I totally agree with you. But when I sit with my council hat on, looking at how much money we have to find and we're also looking at the general budget for the city, and we're looking at a budget that doesn't look as great as it's looked. I mean, there's, it's not like alarming or anything, but there, it's not just, we can't just make this decision in a vacuum. I mean, we, we have to, we have to consider all of these factors. I would rather see the arches. I, I actually uh, was the only one who wanted to see the ability to expand further over the, the the green, well, it's not a green roof anymore, right? Over that area because I, because I was listening to the fire chief and the things that we had to look at. The extras that we had to look at. What we did was asked him which ones were, you know, pretty much essential in his view to operations. And that, there were a couple of them. And then the one that I just mentioned, that one, he was sort of either or on it. And I saw it as something that could be essential. So that was something else I tried to get put in and couldn't get that put in because we didn't even have the money for that.
I think, can I, I don't know, I think I got to interrupt here because I think I understand, Chad, and I may agree with you, but I think we, we have to focus on the plan in front of us.
Okay.
The very contentious project for lots of different reasons. And I feel kind of the way you and some others may feel that we're kind of backed. We, we don't have much say in this process and it's a quick timeline. But I think we need to focus on what we, the feedback that we value.
Another comment along the lines that I was going down. We simp, we just buried a time capsule with pictures of um, of, of Dexter like two weeks ago. When they dig that up in fifty years and they see this thing, they're going to say shit, what did they do? They didn't do anything. They made it a little bit longer and it's going to be the same. But that's, okay, I won't go any further on that. There is a, I feel strongly about the restrooms. Find that money somewhere. There needs to be park identification up there on Dexter and, I mean, on Main Street. And there isn't any. There isn't, uh, here's a question for Marcus. Could that drive be straightened out a little bit? It looks to me like it could, but I don't know the I, I took a look and I thought, well, shit, that would free up some room where something nice could happen up there.
So the DDA is looking at where from the same part of the
Okay. Okay, good. When they, can I go to that meeting? Because I'm not talking about a sign. I'm talking about something that says there's a wonderful park down here and you're invited to come down this road.
Can I clarify something about the bathrooms, please?
Sure, quick, because as I said, we want to focus on.
I know, but I just want to make sure we all have correct information here. Just because we didn't add the addition to the budget that would have allowed for the bathrooms, doesn't mean that in the same conversation we weren't talking about future parks budgets and bathrooms needing to be in all of our parks. And that item that, which I would have loved to have had, I mean, for many reasons, not just the bathrooms, that was the biggest cost. And so because we could provide the bathrooms in future years for less money from a different you know, budget, rather than the budget where we don't have the money, that was ultimately the decision that we made.
I think that's helpful background.
I also wonder what happened to access pedestrian or walkway access from Alpine Street? Could be done, and that's not tremendously expensive. Um. Into the park. So I got more or less here, but it's going to be more of the same for my, my um, position on this. I feel strongly enough on this that I'll step down from this planning commission. Seriously, it just makes me mad that this damn fire station is being built as it is being built when it's, it's so important that it be that it be worth building. And I don't think what's happening here it is. So I'm not threatening that, but man, I was ticked.
I think some people share your frustration, I'm sure. So I appreciate.
I, I'm sorry. I have to say one thing. I, I understand that frustration and I know that a lot of people share that frustration. A lot of people that have told me that. And I just have to say, would you rather have us here not talking about something? Because that's what we did for how many years? It's not easy to come to these decisions and it's not going to be right for everybody, but we finally were actually looking at doing something. Which very well couldn't have happened, let me tell you, because of the meetings that we have leading up to voting the ballot language on, you know, the proposal under the, you know, ballot language proposal. We barely got that passed because seven people sitting at a table. In case you missed it, haven't been able to do that for a number of years. So we finally did. It's not going to be perfect. But I would sincerely hope that nobody wants to resign over this when it's just, you know, I mean, we're doing something. I don't know what else we can do. I, you, you have to.
Yeah, no, I agree. Again, lots of frustration. Let's boil it down to, and right, and Chad, that's absolutely valuable. I mean, your feedback is, is is important as well. I mean, that's your entirely your feedback, but I, I think we do have to react on what's here. And you have a right to vote whichever way you feel based on what's presented. Um, Mr. Cardy?
I've served with you both a long time. And I really like you both and you know, it upsets me a little bit. That we are where we are right now because you both care so much. And you know, I'm as guilty as anyone of occasionally getting um, too passionate about something and um, letting that out. And so you know, I think it's really important to say, Chad, I understand where you're coming from and I respect it a lot. And I really hope you don't resign. And while I understand where you're coming from too. And I know all the work that's gone into it. And I know it's hard to sit here and have put that work in and have us be disappointed in aspects of it. And I am also disappointed in aspects of it. But.
So am I.
Right, I know.
I mean.
Um. And yet, at the same time, what I, what I, what I am going to support this project, even as it is. Even though I wish the bathrooms were there. And the reason I'm going to support it in the end is the firemen. Like, we have put the firemen in a position of really, like, I know some of the firemen. We've put them in a position of really working in conditions that really aren't acceptable. And you know, in a lot of ways, there's that saying, politics is the art of the possible and it's the art of compromise. And I don't think that in this current age, like, we're going to do better than this. And I wish we could. And I take your word, while that you will work to get us those bathrooms. Um.
I will. I think it's embarrassing that we have porta potties. I've always said that.
So I just wanted to say, like, that's all. I like you both. And I really respect where you're both coming from on this. And you're both right. You're both, I think that, like, that's the important thing. You're both right.
Right. And I think that's what's kind of frustrating about this whole process is we look at this list and everything on a private project. There's no way I would. But we are kind of in, in, we're in the position that we're in, I think. And, and unfortunately, I, like I said, I agree with you, Chad. I agree about the bathrooms. I agree about park access. And, you know, it could be a symbolic vote, but I just, it's. Right, I just gotta look at where, where we're at now and, and vote on, you know, what's here. Because again, the bottom line is it's. Not that that's an excuse, but it's, it's going forward. And we know that. And that's what frustrates me, I think, in the bottom line is that it, this is going forward. And. I mean, there's no question about it. Whatever, whatever I have to say right now, tonight, this project is going forward. It's being built like it's shown, or maybe even worse. Um, because we don't have, they could take it off the offline, off our consideration. But I think, again, and having said that, I don't think it's the worst thing in the world. I think people will move on. But I agree, it looks pretty much like what was there. One thing that really troubles me though, that you brought up, and part, most of this can't be fixed, is. Right, that it, it complete, and this is the low, why, well, it's the locational thing that the fire station's there in the first place, but. It com, it's a wall. It is, it may as well be a wall that cuts off, like you said, the downtown from the park. Nobody is going to cross that drive. Nobody does. I've tried. Back in the past, hundreds of times, we stroll, everything else. It, yes, we're, we're doing the best we can, but is there at least a way to. Stripe the concrete or pu, can we put the concrete that we have at crosswalks through? They're not just striped. I mean, can we put stamped concrete through that? And again, I know that it, it does marginal it, but at least it tells people that there's something.
Where are you talking about?
Uh, I'm talking, sorry, across the drive. That's what.
Which drive?
The, some, where the fire truck. Fire truck. Yeah, the main fire, that's like super huge, like it is now. And I, I know why it has to be that way. I mean, there's no question why it has to be. But is there anything? Like Chad said, it's a wall. Nobody goes past that. So is there anything we can do to live in? I, I think the concrete.
Well, you can keep it concrete, which would help be a nice delineator for pedestrians, as well as the con, the concrete across the drive going down into the park. That would be my suggestion as well. But I, I get that these are budget issues.
Right. But that, that's.
I'd like to see a delineation too. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think concrete's a good idea. I don't wanna do stamped concrete.
Okay, whatever. Yeah, then.
But if you cut it and store it, you make it five foot like the wall.
Whatever, just so, yeah, if it's not saying, whatever, just something that denotes that that is a sidewalk that, that leads to that, to that site. So. Did you have something to add to this sidewalk?
More just a question and clarification. Hi, Alabama, OSHA advisors on this.
Okay, thank you.
Um. So I guess Marcus, Marcus is a local opponent. He goes in this one?
Yes.
All city, all which, um, the, the question is visibility of access to the park from the intersection of Main and Alpine. Well, I did, and understanding that pedestrians are not only welcome, but invited to cross the apron of the fire station to get to the walkway we're putting down in the park.
Two things. Two locations, really. Right across where the fire trucks enter and exit, that location as well as going down into the park. Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, I mean, the visibility, you can clearly see, like, there's no visual obstructions. It's just nobody's, they see that sidewalk ending at a massive driveway.
Sure. There's a lot we can do there.
The one question I posed to you, Marcus, that.
That we, we, we did add, there is a side, it is no longer just walking on the driveway down to the park. There is a dedicated sidewalk.
Right, but when again, so that's good.
But it's about seeing it, right?
Exactly. Well, and about, like, showing that it's a, like, across the drive. That's where I'm, I love the addition of that sidewalk, because right, right now, obviously, there's not. But. But like, again, people are gonna see that where that massive driveway is. And most people are gonna kind of stop there. There's nothing that says you can go forward. So I think just bringing that sidewalk through, like mentioned, says, oh, this is still a sidewalk. It continues to something. So.
The question I pose is one that I'm curious about, and I could be way off base here, but it.
Thank you.
Looks like. That drive coming up to Main Street doesn't necessarily need to curve like it does. And if it came up straight, and maybe it can. And I fully understand that, but if it came up straight, it would free up some room to do something there. To, to, uh, introduce people to the park.
I bet you it's a grade, and I think the re, uh, the bridge abutments come.
Oh, I looked at it. Take a look at it.
Okay, anyway, let's look. So, yeah, they will take a look at it.
My hand went off.
Yeah.
Whatever.
But is that drive, but is, aren't they reconstructing the drive as part of this?
They are.
Okay. Yep, okay.
Or the DDA has a separate budget.
Yeah, okay.
It's that, you're not. You aren't without some options.
In the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's, that's important. Um, okay, I lost track of things. So we have a motion. Uh, we have a lot of discussion here. It's very late. Oh my gosh, it's one of our latest meetings. So. But, but then again, I don't wanna squash discussion just because of that, because it is a important issue to us, I mean, to the community in general. Um. Additional.
Feed back.
Yes, Mr. Cover.
There's a comment here that says fire truck turning templates to ensure sufficient space. You guys have run fire truck templates on this, right? There's gonna be no issue, no layout changes.
I mean, that would be really bizarre if they had, fire truck can't fit, turn it around. But.
That comment, I, I interpret as just making those pesky engineers show their work. So.
Yeah, keep, keep those guys out on their toes. No, actually, yeah. Um, all right, thanks, Tom. Um.
Can Tom go through again?
Yes.
Which items did you?
It was item F?
It was just F.
Is the only one that was changed, which was the, that's, it still stands. I know Commissioner Hill did not support that, but that still stands in the motion. Correct. Gee, it was back to, there's only one that is altered in the motion is F. Um.
Okay, can I, there, are, one of the things that's distressing to me about this proposal, I mean, there's so many things, but we don't have any floor plans. So.
I thought I saw.
It's like, I don't know.
There's floor plans.
Yeah, we have.
There are floor plans.
There's floor plans.
Somewhere. Yeah, absolutely.
So why wouldn't there be windows? And I know windows cost money, but it is.
Where?
Hopefully. Facing, well, going down this driveway, okay, maybe that's not so important. It's facing the park. And there is this. Con, oh, not concrete, it's masonry, yes. Huge, I think, masonry wall. It's broken up a little bit by this sort of piece, you know. Um, supports with landscaping, yeah, retaining walls, but. You know, right now, it's, you know, when you're down there, that, that fire station, it's like, no, that's not very nice, but you don't even notice it. You just don't. I go in the park and I never look at the fire station. I have to remind myself before we get into this, like, what's it looking like now? Because it's, it's just sort of receipts. This fault receipt. This is gonna be a, a defining characteristic of the park. And. That, I mean, so I have two aesthetics. Now, you know, blah, blah, blah. But anyway, and then the other is, when I think of the, the contentiousness about Pelham. And whether the view coming into Dexter from, um, Chelsea, you know, uh, or Chelsea Road is, was gonna be a partial garage door. And now, this, I mean, this is fake windows, right? Aren't all those windows in that little thing fake? And then there's this funny, I guess, I mean, I guess I see it structurally, but this funny little alcove. That hasn't, what looks to him like a pretty, you know, utilitarian door there. It's just not, and this is facing on Main Street. And you can say, oh, well, you know, we're, we're with the letter of the law with our. You know, our one entrance is facing on the, you know, the front street, we'll call Alpine. But really. The real presence of this thing is on our main drag, the main street. And I just, I. I, I, I'm a butter spatter. I just. I, I don't know. I don't know what the budget give and take is. I, I appreciate it. I understand, just like everybody else in the world, like, you know, budgets work. They, they're there. But I just don't. Given how, you know, this anger is more an end of town. And it. It's. It's just not. This is not how you want people coming in seeing Dexter. I don't, because this is not what Dexter is. And that's what's stressing to me. And we, we went, you know, who was on that? Well, Kyle was. And Tom, who's not here either, but he spent a bunch of time on that form-based code. And if this were coming in from any other place, it wouldn't get, it, it would be stopped dead. Just based on our code. And we're not adhering to it. We're just, you know, we're kind of tinkering around the edges. And. It's, I don't know. I guess I'm rambling.
No.
Precious time.
Yeah, we're all.
You know, it's, it's a very frustrating project. And I just feel like it's kind of wrong-headed. And I, I don't know what the time is, and I don't know how my policy has to. But I mean, even if you look at the Ohio township.
Yeah, and it's easy to say it's headed in the wrong direction when you take for granted how hard it was to even get here. When we took the vote. To put. Language on the ballot to ask for money, we could not even get. A majority agreement of people to decide on what the budget was, much less the location. So we had to compromise at that point. And that is a huge reason why we are where we are. And I, I know I'm, I'm very frustrated and I, it's not because I don't respect your opinions. I just.
You are in a unique spot.
We are at a spot now where it's like, it's, you know, some nights, some days, you know, whatever. I think we're totally headed in the wrong direction too, but. No direction is a worse direction. And this is the direction we're headed. And at a point. We just have to, we just have to do it. And the other thing is, Karen, and I don't mean, I don't want you to take this the wrong way, because you know I respect you. And everything you just said, frankly. But it's really hard for me to hear this compared to the Pelham project, because the Pelham project is private property. Not tied to public money. And like the budgetary issues, it's like, yeah, we could go looking for the money. And one of those ways is we could go back to the ballot. And we could ask for more money from everybody. Does that, but do we wanna do that? I don't think we wanna do that.
The comparison to Pelham was just the reaction to you.
No, I get that. But at the same time, it's, they're two completely different things.
Yeah, so, all right, I think, sorry, I, I think we have a mo, yeah, we have to just call a vote, I think, at this point, because.
No way to.
Clearly, there is frustration on all sides, but none of this, or not, I shouldn't say none of this. It's all very valuable, but. We can't, some of that just doesn't matter at this point. We have something in front of us, but those opinions are valuable and we're expressing them. Why? No doubt we'll carry those forward. Um, our comments will carry them forward. Council can hear them online.
But, yeah, and one, one last thing I will say regarding carrying those com, comments forward, because I have said, I do agree with a lot of them. If there was any point in this project where I can make this look less like this, whether it be we find more money somewhere miraculously, or. I don't know. But if there is even an opening for that, I hope you guys know I will fight for that.
Yes, thank, and I think your, your view, your input now has been very valuable, at least I think from setting me, like, again, uh. Reorienting the priorities and, or just not priorities, but the, the.
The reality.
The guy, the realities, the guidelines of what we're working with. I am just as frustrated as everybody. Like I said, I feel like I, we don't have a choice here. There, there's no way I would recommend approval of any other, other project with all these issues outstanding with it. They're wavering in all these other ways. But I get where staff council's at. I get where staff's at. I get where the architect's at. I mean, we can't, the architect's dealing with a million. This is what's before us. So I think let's, I, let's get a roll call vote, please, unless there's one final say from anybody who would like to wrap it up. But otherwise. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Cover?
Yes.
Bill?
No.
Cardy?
Yes.
Meatly?
Yes.
Wall speaking.
Yes. Okay. All right. Yes. So thank you all. This was a great discussion of lots of great viewpoints. So. All right, um, either way, that's moving forward. Oh. I mean, we can't, or it's.
Love that idea. I move, we postpone the election of officers to the August meeting.
All right, then the next thing, citizens wishing to address the commission? Oh, I'm sorry. You're right, we do. Okay, uh, all in favor of the elections to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. On, okay. That is, uh, moved to the August meeting. Um, proposed business, well, once the election of officers for the August meeting, uh, anything else you can think off the top of your head? Probably something that, maybe not this exciting to keep us here this long, but hopefully something. Um, all right, citizens wishing to address the commission? Seeing none? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved too early.
Whoa, 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 that is the most eager I've ever heard. I don't even know who support. Okay, move Cardy, support Cover, uh, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wow. That was.
I don't want to.
One marathon.
I know, I know.
Yeah. I, I would.
You know, that I just thought of that I wish that I'd said.